Good evening and welcome to the June 26, 2013, meeting of the Edina Planning Commission. My name is Kevin Staunton, I'm the Chair of the Commission. Jackie, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Shear.
Here.
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 Commissioner Platter.
Here.
Commissioner Forrest.
Here.
Chair Spahn.
Here, thank you. Next up on the agenda is the approval of the meeting agenda. Are there any additions, subtractions, modifications to the meeting agenda? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda.
So what?
In a second.
Second.
Hearing no further discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Meeting agenda is approved. Next up is the approval of the consent agenda. The only item on this evening's consent agenda is the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission on June 12, 2013. Are there any changes, additions, subtractions to the agenda from June 12? Commissioner Platter.
Just to comment, they weren't in our original meeting packets, so are we subject to approve them tonight, or is there?
We can certainly postpone approval of these. They did just get to us tonight, so we can put them on the next agenda if people would like.
I first.
Okay. I entertain a motion to that effect.
Motion to defer.
It's been moved to continue these to the next meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. There is nothing further on the consent agenda, so we'll move to community comment. This is the portion of the meeting that we reserve for members of the public to make public comment on items that are not before us on the agenda this evening. We ask that you come to one of the side microphones and state your name and address and tell us your concern. If there is anyone here who would like to comment during this portion of the meeting, I'd invite you to do that now. Not seeing a stampede to the microphones, I'll entertain a motion to close the public comment.
So what?
And is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Public comment, the community comment is closed. Next up is reports and recommendations. The first item on our agenda is the living streets policy. Wayne, I believe you are going to introduce this, and I think we have the Chair of the Transportation Commission as well.
We do. Tonight, Chair Nelson with the Transportation Commission and I will present and take comments and questions on the living streets policy that the Transportation Commission. So if I could go through the presentation, then we could maybe open it up for discussion after I get through the presentation here, unless you have a compelling question during the presentation itself.
That'd be great.
What the Transportation Commission has actually been working on this for a couple years, essentially of creating a living streets policy, and then I'll go to a plan and we'll cover, you know, the steps that they're going through on it. But I wanted to kind of frame this as what do we have today in the city of Edina? So the situation today is that we're really challenged with many miles of roadways. We have about 487 lane miles of roadway, 220 miles of regular roadways, and the cost of, which equates to about 27 million square feet of pavement, which is, you know, that's a lot of pavement when you think about it. The cost to maintain that square foot of pavement is about $5 to $9 per square foot per year, and that includes the cost to reconstruct a roadway every 40 years. And in the next 10 years, we're looking at only reconstructing about 120 lane miles. That's kind of our capacity financially and staff-wise to reconstruct it. So it's going to take quite a few years to get through the system, but we are chipping away at it. Some of the challenges that we have is, like say, is between 2009, 2012, we've averaged about 96 residents' requests each year to look at traffic safety issues, most related to bicycle and pedestrian. And then when you, when looked at the quality of life survey, 37 percent of the residents identified speeding as a very serious or somewhat serious problem, and 26 percent residents identified stop sign violations as a very serious or somewhat serious problem. So when you look at what they, when they're calling in or identifying those issues, it all comes back to basically being a pedestrian on the street or bicycling on the street is where the underlying issue is, is that interaction with the vehicles and such. The, in 2010, Edina had the largest percentage of residents over the age of 65, 21 percent in the metro area. And on the other side of it, we have a very fast-growing population of school-aged children, about 24 percent of Edina residents are under 18 years old. Both of these groups, when you put them on a roadway with vehicles and stuff, it's groups that are less likely to be safe on those roadways. And we always talk about the kids, but the growing older population or mature population that are out walking and stuff, that's what I'm always concerned about too as a city engineer. The other part of this is the stormwater runoff that we have, and we'll be talking a little bit about that later tonight and other agenda items. But our water bodies in the city are basically considered impaired water bodies. So the two creeks that come through the city are impaired basically for chlorides, and a lot of the lakes are impaired for basically aquatic recreation, nutrient loading, those types of things, phosphorus that are going right into the lakes and streams. We're responsible for about 670,000 miles, or lineal feet, not miles, I'm sorry, lineal feet of stormwater, storm sewer system in the city. What we're experiencing is what the regulations have, they've become stricter over the last few years by the watershed districts, the Pollution Control Agency, DNR, is that we're anticipating that we're going to be, have about a 30 percent increase in costs to meet these standards in the future. So what we're looking at is, you know, how do we do business differently when we're looking at stormwater systems and such, and how do we tackle that aspect of it? The street improvements, projects themselves are, along with this, which includes the stormwater aspect, are in the sewer, other sewer and water aspects are subject to many different agencies' reviews. And we're listing all the agencies that we deal with on a regular basis on all of our projects. So we got the Pollution Control Agency, the Department of Health, the Department of Natural Resources, the Department of Transportation, Hennepin County, the two watershed districts, Nine Mile Creek Watershed District and Minnehaw Creek Watershed District, and then the Met Council Environmental Services. And the MCS is a group that actually permits the sanitary sewer system in the metro area itself. So how do we capture all of these different competing interests and try to accommodate it in one policy? And that's essentially what this will help us do. So moving forward for the living streets in the city. So what is the living streets? Living streets balances the needs of motorists, bicyclists, pedestrian, and transit riders to promote safety and convenience, enhance community identity, create economic vitality, improve environmental sustainability, provide opportunities for active living and better health. The living streets policy defines Edina's vision for living streets and the principles and plans that will guide their implementation. The Edina living street vision, transportation utilized, its transportation utilized in all modes is equally safe and accessible. Families regularly choose walking or biking instead of driving. Streets enhance neighborhood character and community identity, and streets are inviting places that encourage human interaction and physical activity. It's a public policy that strives to promote sustainability through balanced infrastructure investments, environmental stewardship, and reduced energy consumption are pursued in the public and private sectors alike, and streets support vibrant commerce and add to the value of adjacent land uses. We have a couple examples here of what living street elements might look like. For instance, on 70th Street, next to the Galleria, between France and York, you have a tree canopy that's sustained, you got the pedestrian lighting, sidewalks, traffic calming, which is essentially the roundabout. If you recall, that used to be a four-lane roadway, and before we narrowed it down to, reduced it down to two lanes. And then you have landscaping. This is another project that we just completed last year that, on Gallagher Drive, where we incorporated the Three Rivers Trail on the south side and east side of the roadway. We have some bioswells that yet, that we need to actually have landscaped, marked pedestrian crossings on it, some landscape, some furniture at the bus stops, some other landscaping up to the boulevards and the sidewalk. Now, this was just a glorified mill and overlay project. If we were to do a reconstruct, we would actually be putting in another boulevard by the sidewalk. We're no longer building sidewalks just adjacent to the roadway. This is the Tracy Avenue project that we completed last year, where we have parking bays, we have accessible ramps for the crossings on the sidewalks, we have some rain gardens, little bioswells at some of the bumpouts, and we have bike lanes and then reduced lane widths. Typically, the lane widths on a state aid road are 12 feet, and these are down to 11 foot wide. So the living streets policy applies to essentially all city street construction or reconstruction projects, privately-built streets, sidewalks, paths, or trails, park paths or trails that connect to the right-of-way. So for instance, when I was reviewing the Southdale apartment plan that came in for the final plan, and one of the criteria was to have a sidewalk that went from their apartments up to the transit station, instead of having it right adjacent to their circulator road, interior circulator, right on the curb, I'm insisting to move it off and put it, have a nice boulevard and between York Avenue, so that you're not walking up along a circulator road. So already starting to apply some of these elements to it. So where are we at right now? So we have, the vision and goals is the what, which is the policy that we're, that the Transportation Commission is going through the process right now. And then the how would be, the next step would be the living streets plan, and then the where, the needs assessment. So we'll be looking at the bicycle plan, safe routes to school, actually, we're calling it active routes to school, and then the sidewalk priority plan, and then the street capital improvement plan. We're down here in May and June, we're anticipating, or we will have a workshop with the City Council on July 16 to go over the plan. The plan for the living streets plan, the next step essentially, the content of that would be looking at the designs, the street design guidelines, the sidewalks and pedestrian crossing standards, bike facility standards, traffic calming, streetscape and stormwater management, lighting and street furniture design process, resident engagement and connectivity guidelines. What we're anticipating is forming an advisory committee in July, so we're hoping that you'll have a volunteer or you assign someone from the Planning Commission to be on that advisory committee. And then, as we go through the process, we're hoping that by 2014 is that we'll actually have a living streets plan in place. Some of the additional steps that we, that they know that's going to be coming out of this process is looking at the ordinances, our engineering standards, other policies, building and zoning codes, maintenance policies, enforcement policies and practices, all to incorporate into the living streets. And then, with the comp plan update coming shortly, in about three, four years, it's going to be here before we know it, is that we can incorporate this living streets policy and plan into the comprehensive plan. So tonight, what I would like to do is, Chair Nelson, I'd like to have a discussion with the Planning Commission about input on the policy, ideas for the living streets plan itself, and then volunteers for the living streets advisory committee. So at that, let's, if you can, open up for a discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Hool. Welcome, Chair Nelson. Any questions for Wayne on his presentation before we have further discussion? Commissioner Forrest.
Are there any challenges, perceived challenges now that you're anticipating as far as we work through the policy and the plan? Do you see any roadblocks, any, bad choice of terms, any barriers to going forward along the way, or things that'll have to be addressed?
Speed bumps.
I don't know if we're seeing any really big speed problems. You know, we're looking forward to the workshop coming up in July with the City Council. And really, we floated this by you back in, I want to say, December, January timeframe, maybe over the winter sometime, preliminarily, and we just kind of came back, we wanted to go to all the boards and commissions and just get comments, feedback, and see where your take is on this, if there's anything glaringly missing, or that we're, you know, basically that we're missing or need to relook at. But we're not really anticipating any problems with any of those agencies that were discussed or anybody else.
I think one of the items that we have to understand is that you're not going to have one template that's going to fit all streets. And so as we go through this, is we're going to have to create different templates for different streets, types of streets, you know, if it's a collector, if it's a local street, and if it's a street that doesn't have much traffic, it's like a small cul-de-sac, so that you're not applying, you know, maybe, you know, if you're not insisting, saying you have to have sidewalks on both sides of the street, you know, on something that only maybe has, you know, five houses on it or something. So that's where, as we're going through the plan itself, we should be flushing those types of items out.
Commissioner Graeber.
As a practical matter, I mean, we just approved the Byerlys redo, and, you know, as we receive, until this whole thing is in place, as we receive proposals for redevelopment in various areas, are you incorporating what you think the ideas might end up being into the design? In other words, we've got that roundabout now on Hazelton Road, and I assume that that's, is at least guided somewhat by the discussions you've had with respect to the living streets. Comments on that?
Yeah, we are actually incorporating all those elements. You know, we know what the different types of elements are, you know, like the bioswells and things like that. And so we're even on our sidewalk project on France Avenue, was incorporating some of those items into that, where we're capturing that stormwater. And some of that is just, we have to do it because of economics, because it's tough to put in stormwater ponds or even infiltrate in some areas. So we're trying to do that, and even on, let's say, the Byerlys plan itself, when you look at that, you know, overall, it's a good plan, when you're comparing against a typical living streets plan or policy. Even the Southdale Apartments is, like I say, is another one that, having to move the sidewalk over so it fits those elements.
Commissioner Platter.
I said a comment on implementation of this, kind of to that point a little bit, is, is there, or when would a plan to be codified? In other words, are there some things that should be looked at sooner than later as kind of broader pieces in the design standards? For example, of when they come in with a site that it has, it's catching some of these things versus waiting till kind of every T is crossed on this to get something in the code. Just, I don't know what your thoughts are, and, you know, the, to me, you'd want to, a lot of stuff is coming through this, the longer you wait, I mean, the tougher it's going to be to do that. I'd just like to see your thoughts on, you know, what the timeframe is, is there things we can do earlier? You know, from our standpoint, it's kind of, you know, it's tough to enforce because it's not language right now, so how, you know, do you have any thoughts on that interim positions?
Yeah, I think that's one of the issues we're fighting with, is that we want to get this through, so we're moving forward as quickly as possible. But we also wanted to get it out to all the boards and commissions, so they can see what's coming and maybe, you know, put that into their thought pattern as they're going through things. Yes, it's not policy yet, and even once we get the policy, then we have to develop a plan, and each of those little phases, the sidewalk, you know, what's going to be the priority. So we're looking at things, certainly as we're going through road reconstructions each year, and looking toward next year even now, we're looking at putting as many of these elements in there as possible, but it's a little difficult on just a straight road reconstruction to narrow the street, because there's not the money in it for that. So some of these things, it may pertain to sidewalks, but narrowing the lane probably isn't going to be feasible on a road reconstruction. So my point is, we're just trying to get the message out there, this is coming, we're pushing it as quickly as we can. Dates, I'm not exactly sure when we're, we're just getting this.
There's many opportunities as we go here along the way, and Byerlys and this other piece we're going to see tonight here, I mean, you know, those are the, some big areas, and they won't redevelop for a long time after this probably, so how do we catch that?
From a staff level, I think we do a pretty good job of pointing that out to the developers when they're coming in, is that we want to see these types of items, you know, from the rain gardens infiltration items to the walkways and, you know, having stuff vegetated around it and things. One example, on a public project that we're just kicking off, is the 54th Street Bridge Reconstruction and Roadway Reconstruction Project. And we're anticipating and folding in a lot of these elements of the living streets, the elements of the living streets plan into that project, even though we don't have a plan, but we know what those are, you know, based off of the Los Angeles Plan, or the Maplewood, or North St. Paul Plan, is essentially the plans that we've, have pretty much followed when they put this together.
Commissioner Schroder.
I think the challenge we have is, and it falls probably back to this body more than any other, is that when you read through this or many of the other living streets policies, it assumes that everyone's starting within the right-of-way or never getting off of the right-of-way. And what we need to figure out is how we reframe our guidance through a comprehensive plan or our ordinances, so that people are actually connected to the streets from public buildings. And we haven't really done that, we, as a code yet, we've encouraged it as we've looked, particularly at projects coming forward through PUD, but it'd be my opinion that if a living streets policy is going to be successful, it's the interface between whatever we do within the rights-of-way and the front door of publicly accessible buildings that we need to be dealing with. And this doesn't deal with that yet, that has to come back to us, but we need to take up that charge. If this is going to be our policy, we need to be framing our own land development policy that actually connects people to the facilities that are within the streets.
One of the questions I have, I mean, I think Commissioner Schroder makes great points, it's, in some ways, it's a, how do we dovetail two different commissions? One that's concerned about the right-of-way and one that's concerned about the property that goes right up to the right-of-way. Both are trying to plan, and how do we make sure that the right-of-way and the land that's being regulated next to it works together? One of the things we've talked about that's on our work plan, and Wayne, you mentioned earlier that the comprehensive plan update will be sneaking up on us in five years, it seems like a long ways away now, but we've talked about this year trying to get a subgroup of our commission to start putting together some thinking on the comprehensive plan, and I think this is obviously an excellent topic. The comprehensive plan includes land use and transportation chapters that we ought to be looking at, and figuring out how to, as Commissioner Schroder described it, how to make those two work together seamlessly is really important. The other thing that comes to mind for me is, I'm curious how this relates to the France Avenue corridor study that we've been undertaking kind of in lieu of the bridge over France Avenue. I don't know if either of you can help us, I mean, is this, is this kind of, is that a subset of this, are these principles being used in that examination, or?
Yep.
Can you shed some light on that for us?
The France Avenue project, actually, we're, we'll be incorporating a lot of these principles into that project. Right now, what we're bidding out is kind of the geometric part of it, so we know where the curb line's going, we know where the sidewalk is going, we've designed the crosswalks, traffic signals, removing the free right turn lanes on it. The next step, and actually, we have a meeting next, no, two weeks, two weeks from tonight, actually, or from tomorrow night, July 9th, whatever that is, that we're actually having an urban design meeting with the stakeholders and anybody else that's interested in it, to look at the urban design piece. And that'll fold in some of the other elements, that'll be part of the project, like maybe the overstore trees, the type of lighting, the design of the lighting itself, some, maybe some monuments, or something along that route there. So that'll, like I say, that'll, the goal is, is when we're finished with the project, is that it'll be pretty close to a living street. We won't be a full living streets, because we're not reconstructing the entire roadway itself, especially the west side, but we'll be, definitely be folding in a lot of those different elements and principles.
Yeah, we're, on that particular project, we're narrowing the street, the lane widths, bringing in some, well, some of the beautification pieces into it, hopefully we'll be talking about that July 9th. You know, some of the plantings and things, the tree canopy, the bioswells, there's a, on the east side of France, there's a, going to be a multi-use path. So we're trying to incorporate as much as we can, but again, the funds are somewhat limited, and that's what we run into on most projects, that we don't have, you know, unlimited funds for anything. So we need to use the dollars to the best use that we can. And that's one reason we went away from the bridge over France Avenue being at one location to utilizing those funds for, three, very good crossings across France, and maybe to use as a model throughout the rest of France Avenue and other major streets in the city.
I know that Commissioner Carr from our commission is a member of that group, and I'm not sure how many meetings you've had since the initial meeting, but if you can make sure, include her on that list circulation, and I think, I haven't talked to her yet about it, but she may be a logical person to continue that interaction by being part of the, part of the working group that you're putting together on the living streets as well. Other questions? Commissioner Carpenter.
Wayne, in particular, I'm curious what you do, if anything, on a follow-up basis to kind of measure the outcomes. So you go through the living street analysis, you go through the construction of the streets, et cetera, and do you come back afterwards and do a follow-up study to ascertain what the impacts are, or the benefits are in terms of what they're projected to be and what they really are?
Different parts of a project, you can do that. Like, for instance, if you're putting in a bike lane or sidewalks, we actually have video cameras now that we'll put out on the roadways and, you know, videotape for 24, 48 hours, and they'll come back and count the cyclists or the pedestrians and such. And then for speeds, you can, speeds of the vehicles, you can definitely, you know, count the speeds or get that data. Stormwater, we actually, those are calculations you do ahead of time, and so you calculate how much runoff reduction that you'll have and how much treatment that you have. We actually had, when we started putting in, what we have these treatment structures or grit chambers, there was many different types of grit chambers on the market, and so we actually did a study, we had about three to five, that were different styles or different brand names, basically. So we actually went out a few years ago and did analysis in the fall and actually sucked out all the leaves and debris that was in those treatment structures and measured them, and went back and kind of calculated how much phosphorus we're removing and which one did the best job. And that's the one that, the ones that we're specing now are the ones that were easiest to maintain and did the best job.
Commissioner Schroder.
I have a question, because when you're, when reading through this, I didn't see anything that ever addressed kind of head-on maintenance. And one of the things about creating all these facilities is, if we don't sweep the bike lanes, all of the cars moving by sweeps all the debris from the travel lanes into the bike lanes. We don't talk about clearing snow from pathways, which takes away the opportunity. We don't talk about maintaining trees and other plantings that we do to provide more comfort on these corridors. All of these have implications on the city's budget, and I'm wondering how those are being addressed in the context of our living streets policy.
And we have talked about those things, and not put directly into the policy, it's going to be more, I think the policy does talk a little bit about maintenance, but we understand that's a cost factor and it's something we need to understand. You know, when we are doing more and more sidewalks through the city, it's a concern, are the residents going to be taking care of those sidewalks in the wintertime, or is the city going to be? So we're, you know, we're weighing the options there, because there is some significant dollars to be spent on maintenance and upkeep of those. So that is more, you know, I think it's going to fall more into the plan, but we did touch on it in the policy, I believe, a little bit.
Yeah. The other thing that we're folding in that's new is looking at the sustainability of the infrastructure. And there's actually a new rating system, it's a national rating system by the Institute of Sustainability, and it's called a division rating system. And so they rate it, I think, on just 60 different criteria, and part of maintenance is one of the aspects in rating that. So we're just starting to get into that rating system. Some of my staff will get certified in that to be rating different projects, and as we go forward with even our neighborhood roadway projects, we want to be rating those for sustainability. Because I think our ultimate goal, and everybody has, is to be a sustainable community, essentially.
Commissioner Shear.
I was reading with interest the section on sidewalks and talking about adding where they would be appropriate. Have you, are there new areas that we're thinking of, that you can identify by area as opposed to some of these generic sorts of descriptors that we're thinking about adding sidewalks currently in the city?
Actually, yeah, the, some of the areas that we're actually working on right now is the school road sidewalk. So from Concord over to Benton Avenue would be a one that hopefully we'll have constructed here. here in late July or August. Interlock and Boulevard is another one. There's a segment up, up on Interlock and by Vanderborck that was put in to accommodate a crosswalk. And we've had a petition to extend it all the way to Vernon Avenue and all the way to Merlic's Drive. Zerxes Avenue is another one on the west side that's, that's missing. There's another one, 42nd Street, up, up in the Morningside area, then, then down by Normandale Lutheran Church, the, the frontage road from Benton down around Valley View Road is another, another sidewalk. And then our comprehensive plan identifies a lot of the missing gaps of sidewalks, more on a, you know, 10,000-foot level. What we're, part of this, this, the policy and the plan and then implementation is actually to create a, a new sidewalk plan and prioritize where we should be putting in the, the missing sidewalks. And we actually have a transportation planner that just started a week ago. That's, that'll be, that's his, his, one of the sole things on his plate is to, is to work with the Pedestrian and Cyclist Safety Fund and create that, that sidewalk plan with the Transportation Commission and other focuses, and then go through the prioritization of, of those sidewalks and then just plan out the, you know, building out the sidewalk system.
Thank you. Just as a sort of an aside, I, I wonder if you noted in the newspaper this morning, there's been a lot of discussion in Minneapolis as the urban forest took a hit in the storm last week, that some of the areas where new sidewalks have been put in place, that damaged root structures of large existing trees, they think that compromised those trees. So I suppose we'll have some interesting questions going forward if we are in areas where there are boulevard trees, some of the older parts of town.
Yeah, I, we've had some discussion on that, that aspect because when we typically will put, put a sidewalk in, is we typically will work around the mature trees. And some, sometimes we'll even forego putting in the, the, the sand base or class five and just put the, the, the concrete right up and over and anticipating that the, the tree root's going to be pushing it and, and breaking it versus cutting, cutting the, the tree root. A lot of cases, if you remember the windstorm that went through the Country Club a number of years ago, that toppled a lot of trees. And when we analyzed, when I went through and analyzed the trees, very few of the roots actually went underneath the sidewalks or, or even underneath the, the roadway itself.
Just, just was interesting as I read it this morning, and I think about us adding sidewalks. Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Forrest?
So where is this at right now? Maybe I missed it procedurally. Is this a finalized policy or is this going to be brought forward to the council for?
There's been a, a variety of iterations of this particular policy. This is kind of where we're at today, and, and this is what we're planning on bringing to the, the City Council work session in a, in a few weeks here or so, or in, in mid-July. So that's really, you know, we're, we're going around, hopefully by then we'll have been to all the boards and commissions, year, maybe the fourth or fifth that we've been to now. So, you know, if there's, if there's things to add, and certainly if, if we missed on the maintenance piece or, or some of that that Commissioner Schroeder mentioned, you know, there's things that we'd like to add and get in there so we, we know we need to, do that. So we're taking, you know, notes and, and figuring out what we need to add to it if there is anything, or if there's duplication or anything that you see that needs to be addressed. That's, that's one of the main reasons we're going around.
I guess the reason I was asking is we talked about codification and whatever, and so much of it is, is not, it's stuff that the city deals with. It's not outsiders coming in and, and say, building something or, or whatever. So the streets themselves, the right-of-way stuff, the codification maybe isn't as much of an issue. But what I like about this is this will give us something concrete that we can point to as rationale for the decisions that we make too. So it's kind of an indirect codification in ways as far as larger projects that come forward, we can use this as our guidance and it'll be great.
Well, I think the concept that was made earlier is that, you know, getting to the public right of way or to the sidewalks of the streets are, are, are important issues. And like the way Bayreuth is positioned right now, there is no sidewalk in front of that on France Avenue, but even if there were, you know, how do you get somebody all the way to the front door? I mean, you're, you know, it's not a quarter mile, but it seems like it if you're walking across all that, that sea of asphalt. So that, making that connection and by turning the building around and, and making it closer to the sidewalk and street, that is one way to do that.
Commissioner Platter and then Commissioner Potts?
I just have a comment. As far as public education on this and how is that going to be addressed? Because I, you know, I would see this coming up, you know, the, the Wooddale Bike Path, for example, is a probably bad example, but, you know, or good, you know, how, how, how will this be rolled out, I guess? And because it's going to start showing up in plans that are going out for public review and is there an education piece that needs to be done? Or how would, any thoughts on, on doing those pieces?
Actually, part, part of the plan process is to develop and implement a resident engagement process. So, so, yeah, they'll, they'll definitely be going out to the, to the community and sharing, sharing the plan and aspects of the plan itself. And that's a good opportunity too to talk about all the facilities, you know, your side, your pedestrian facilities, your bike facilities, the vehicle facilities, transit facilities, all those, those items as we're, as we're talking to the community.
So you'd probably have some open houses and other types?
Yep. Neighborhood meetings, now, open houses. I'm not sure if we're going to do door-to-door knocking, but some areas we might. And that's what we're doing on the 54th Street project is actually knocking on doors from 52nd Street down to 56th Street and from France, France to Wooddale, asking them about their issues and needs right now, so.
Commissioner Potts?
One other thought on the topic of stormwater management, that's a, I think, a big area where our two commissions overlap. You, you've got some great plans in place about, you know, cutting down on the pollutants, cutting down on sedimentation, easing the burden on the, the overall system. On our side, on the, the private properties that feed that system, we've talked a little bit about lot coverage of, of building. We've only, we've, we've barely touched the notion of impervious surface and any sort of regulation of that. I mean, we've discussed, discussed it, but we really haven't gotten our arms around any sort of regulation of it. So the way it stands right now, a private property owner has a choice of, you know, they cannot dump their stormwater onto their neighbor's yard. So they, they can treat it on their own or they can put it in the city system. And, and there's no, there's no limit, I guess, to what they can put into the city system. It seems like that's something to, to be a, a point of conversation when the two commissions get together, just how, how to manage that.
Right. And actually, that's even involving the, the Energy and Environmental Commission. That looks at the stormwater aspect. And we had that discussion when we're talking about the zoning and drainage and such, you know, if you're, if you're adding, you know, 20, 30% to the public system, what is that doing to our flood storage and, and, and just treatment in general? But essentially flood storage, which then comes back to, to potentially get into different structures in the city. And the, the stormwater charts are, are, are changing, you know, and everybody knows that, that a lot of the, your, your big rain events are, they're, they're more, are, are big events, quicker, quicker, bigger events, essentially. And so, you know, how do we, how do we handle that when a, when a system was designed for the old stormwater charts and as we go forward with the, with the new ones and, and try to keep our stormwater rates in check also?
Commissioner Forrest?
Just a follow-up. I'm just curious, since you've provided us some interesting numbers at the beginning of this presentation, how much, how many, how, to what percentage, I don't know how you do this, but of the streets in Edina don't have stormwaters, storms, sewer?
That's a great question. I think it was about 20% or so that didn't have curb and gutter on it, so I would suspect that that's going to be the percentage that, that are lacking stormwater systems. A lot of times, even if you had curb and gutter, or even some of the concrete streets that are integral, you could go 800 to, you know, 1,500 feet without finding another catch basin or storm sewer system. And nowadays, we, we go about 300, 400 feet or so putting the storm sewers or catch basins in. Which brings it to the challenge of, with the sump pump connections, is that we're, as we're doing the neighborhoods, we're putting in drain tile so people can take their sump pumps instead of, you know, back in, in 97, 98, we kicked everybody out of their laundry tubs with their sump pumps so that clear water wasn't going to the sanitary sewer system. Now putting in the drain tile system. So that's a challenge that we have, and that's where we're spending the most of our stormwater funds, is putting those, that drain tile in. So it's a challenging, the whole stormwater system itself, even on the public side, is pretty challenging.
Well, one of the things that we need, I think, to appreciate is that stormwater management has at least a couple of components. One is this kind of flood control, removing water that would otherwise damage property. But the other is quality management and, you know, some of the rain garden things that you're talking about and other features that allow the water to stay on the property and percolate through is going to enhance the quality. And we're going to have a more detailed discussion about stormwater in a few minutes, so. One other question that I had just from a process perspective, we've done a lot of talking about policy and then plan. Can you just elaborate for us a little bit on what the difference between the plan and the policy is? I understand we're nearing the end of the policy formation, but what, is the plan then going to be an ordinance? Is it going to be something between a policy and an ordinance? What, what does a plan look like as opposed to a policy?
So we're looking here tonight, one of the reasons is to ask for your help in sitting on that committee or that subcommittee that would review and, and really come together with the plan. We have a lot of ideas and, and things, but we, we don't have the plan obviously in place. We wanted to, number one, get the policy put in place so that we can go back and, and really get a plan that we can all follow.
So it would be fair to say the plan is kind of a, a, a strategy for implementing the policy and maybe, maybe akin to a piece of the comprehensive plan that then gets implemented through ordinances that could be part of the zoning code, might be other ordinances as well?
Yep, absolutely. Because as, as you're going through the, the plan with that advisory group, you're going to be identifying different, different codes, parts of the code that needs to be changed or revised or, or added through that process. So I'd imagine that, just going through the process, that you, that you are going to be updating different parts of the code.
Well, and we're a little ways off from it, but we've recognized the fact that it's better to take a kind of midterm look at our comprehensive plan and start to flag those items that we ought to be focusing on over the next five years, and this sounds like it's one of them. Any other questions or comments? Paul and Wayne, thank you for giving us the overview and for answering questions and having this good discussion. Good luck with your discussions with the City Council, and we'll look forward to more participation. We will get you at least one volunteer for the committee. Commissioner Platter?
I'm sorry. Tell them how you want to get involved.
Okay. We'll have, yeah, we'll have some discussions and get you at least one, if not more, names of people who can participate in the advisory committee as you move forward.
Appreciate it. Thanks for your input.
All right. Thanks much. Next up is the AUAR update for Pentagon Park. Carrie, are you leading us off on this one?
Yeah, I'll tee this one up.
Okay.
Just to give a little background, a few planning commissioners were in their seats back in 2007, 2008, when we went through a, a master development plan for this, this area that we're going to be looking at, Pentagon Park. It's the property south of the Fred Richards Golf Course and the Pentagon Tower site, the intersection of 77th and Highway 100. At that time, an overall master development plan was approved for that area. It included over 600 units of senior housing south of the golf course. It also included an 80,000-square-foot hotel and a couple of office towers with some parking ramps on that Pentagon Tower site. As part of that approval, an environmental study was done, similar to an environmental assessment worksheet or an environmental impact statement. We did a, an AUAR, an alternative urban area-wide review. So it took a look at not only those sites, but sites around it. We'll take a look at a, a graphic of the entire area in a minute. But that was done as part of that 2008 plan. As you know, none of that development took place, and because no development has taken place, we need to update that AUAR. Since then, Hillcrest Development has purchased the property, or they're now the property owners. We'll hear from them following our AUAR discussion. Scott Tankenoff and Jim Nelson are here. They're going to just present just quickly what it is they're doing in the Pen, in the Pentagon area and some of their, maybe touch on some of their future plans. WSB was the consultant that did the AUAR back in 2008. Andy Moffett was the lead in that. And in order to update the AUAR, Andy is still with WSB, and we've hired her to do the update. And so she is here and is going to walk us through a little bit of that AUAR. The planning commission is just asked to review, provide any comments, and this will go to the City Council, and they'll authorize distribution of the AUAR. We would then send it out to adjacent communities for their comment. So with that, unless there are some questions?
Are we, are we deeming this approved at this point? Or help me understand what exactly we're being asked to do tonight?
We are, and I'll, I'll let Andy expand on this a little bit more, but we're, we're authorizing, well, the City Council will authorize the distribution of the report and adjacent agencies would comment on it, the adjacent cities, watersheds, those agencies. It looks at different development scenarios, and I believe Andy will, will walk through some of the different scenarios that are considered.
Welcome, Ms. Moffett.
Good evening. Chairman of the Division of Environmental? As Carrie said, my name is Andy Moffett, and I manage our environmental group at WSB. And I do recognize you, some of you from five years ago going through the, yeah.
Uh-oh.
The plan. I have more gray hair than I did back then.
We look a little older.
So as Mr. Teague mentioned, the, the site is about 135 acres. Again, specifically, back five years ago, we were looking at the two areas, the Towers area and the Pentagon Quads is what we called it, that area. In addition to that, we decided to look at the surrounding area as well. An alternative urban area-wide review allows you to look at different scenarios. So the city took this time to say, hey, we know we have this area potential redevelopment. There's likely other redevelopment. We might as well look at it all in one package deal. So an AUAR, as Mr. Teague mentioned, is an environmental review document, and the Environmental Quality Board for the state of Minnesota provides guide, rules and guidance on how these documents get put together. An AUAR is sort of a hybrid between an environmental assessment worksheet and an environmental impact statement. But the difference is an AUAR gives you flexibility when you don't have a specific development plan or you want to look at different scenarios. And that was really the case that we had five years ago. An AUAR includes a mitigation plan, so there are specific items that are in there related to stormwater or traffic or parks and open space that the AUAR outlines. And then when development occurs, that development would need to adhere to the mitigation measures in the environmental document in addition to other, you know, the, the city and the other agencies would have requirements as well. But the items in the AUAR need to be adhered to when development occurs. And the AUAR gets updated every five years for it to remain valid. If it isn't updated every five years, it just, it's not a valid environmental review if a project were to come in. And that is where we are here today with a five-year update.
If I can just interrupt for one minute?
Yes.
Can you tell us what triggered the AUAR in the first place in, in September of 2007?
The magnitude of the redevelopment would trigger, would trigger environmental review, whether it's an EAW or an EIS. Certain projects can choose to do an AUAR. So it was the size of the square footage of the proposed redevelopment that triggered the environmental review document.
And is it, is it in essence trying to gauge the infrastructure capacity to handle that and other similar types of developments?
It is triggered through the Minnesota Environmental Policy Act, which, much like the National Environmental Policy Act, in Minnesota says, hey, responsible government units, we want you to, yes, be sure that you look at the infrastructure needs and make sure that the infrastructure is there to handle it, and also we want to analyze the environmental impact on our resources that we have.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
And I do have, this was, this is the original A U A R, which is much thicker than the update that you have. This was a very extensive process. As required by rule, we had a number of agency meetings. We had a number of public meetings as well. And it took, I believe, about a year to go through this process. Going through an A U A R update, which is where we are right now, is not as extensive, because you're really just doing a check of, did anything develop? If so, did it meet the mitigation requirements? Are the mitigation requirements still valid? And are there any other environmental impacts that have maybe changed or things that are new in the area? So in the A U A R, it looks at a whole host of items. And again, there's guidance provided on how to analyze these items, looking at traffic, stormwater, water and wastewater, parks and trails, all sorts of things. And that was in the original A U A R, and that is available on the city's website right now. We touched a bit on the development scenarios, and what this looked at was four. The first scenario was the existing comprehensive plan. That's required to, it's one of the required scenarios you have to look at. We looked at the master plan, which Mr. Teague had mentioned was proposed at the time, and then looked at two other possible scenarios. With this A U A R update, we did not change any of the assumptions with those scenarios. As we mentioned, there is a developer who has some interest in developing some of these properties. Their plans fall within the densities that are in here. They're not expected to exceed any of these densities, so these scenarios are still valid scenarios to evaluate. And in the A U A R update are the, kind of the figures for the scenarios. This was a comprehensive plan, and as we go through, really what changes is the use here at the Pentagon Quad and the use here at the Towers. But the comprehensive plan had about 1.9 million square feet, I'm sorry, 2.89 million square feet of office, commercial, the hotel was in there, and some light industrial, and also included some residential square footage as well. Scenario two, again, what has changed is this quads area and the tower area. And this was the master plan. The master plan concept included the hotel, some commercial, some light industrial as well. Scenario three, we looked at, you'll see those two areas turn purple, kind of the maximum commercial build. This scenario did not include any residential component. It was all commercial, light, industrial. There was a little bit of about 31,000 square feet associated with the corner over here, but everything else went for commercial, light, industrial. And then the final scenario four was, well, what if we do have some more residential build in there? So that included about 1.5 million square feet of kind of high-density residential in that area. So those were the four scenarios, and they are still the four scenarios that have been carried through with the A U A R update. So the update, again, is much skinnier document than the original A U A R. So the original A U A R still is the environmental review, and the A U A R update supports it. It evaluates what has developed, and in this case, nothing has developed in that area since the A U A R. It looks at the mitigation measures and determines if those are still valid. We look at any new or changed conditions. And so things that we did do with this was we rechecked with the Department of Natural Resources, associated with habitat, wildlife, threatened endangered species, and they indicated there was no change, which is not surprising for a fully developed area that we're looking at. We did a check again with the Pollution Control Agency of any new contamination, known sources of leaks or pollutants. And there were some changes, but there wasn't anything that was unexpected in the area. We looked at the mitigation areas, and again, all of the mitigation still remains valid. There was a couple of things that changed. The city of Bloomington and the Metropolitan Council did do a wastewater project just south of here, and that was actually identified. The wastewater system, the sewer line, was identified with the lift station as a potential issue. If this whole area fully developed to the densities as outlined in the A U A R, we would have had some capacity issues with the sewer system. So that project has actually moved forward. So part of that mitigation has already been taken care of, and so we're not anticipating, again, if the whole square footage redevelops as outlined in the A U A R, we're not anticipating any wastewater issues with the lift station downstream. The Nine Mile Creek Watershed District has new rules, and so any redevelopment in this area would need to adhere to those new rules. And we did update the traffic counts to see if the traffic mitigation would still be valid. And what we found was that overall, actually, the traffic has decreased about 5% to 15% compared to the traffic counts five years ago. So there's no need for additional traffic mitigation associated with development in this area. So those also still remain valid. And the A U A R update also evaluates surrounding redevelopment. It's part of the cumulative impact analysis. And so, working with the city of Edina and the city of Bloomington, we looked at what was anticipated to redevelop five years ago, and some of those things did redevelop, and also added in some new things that both cities are anticipating. So what happens next with the A U A R update is, the original A U A R, the requirement is, it went out for a 30-day comment period. And again, that goes to about 25 different agencies. We also had some public meetings associated with that. That came back, it was revised, comments responded to, and a final A U A R went out for a 10-day comment period. With an A U A R update, which is where we're at, what we are required to do is send the update out for a 10-day, a 10-working-day comment period. So we are here tonight to go over this update with you. It will be going to the city council. If the city council authorizes its distribution, again, they're not approving it at that point. They're just sending it out for the 10-day comment period. We'd go out for the 10-day, working-day public comment period. We'd review and respond to those comments when they came back, see if there was any adjustments that needed to be made. And if not, we'd go to city council, and they would adopt the A U A R, which then, the original A U A R and any of the items that are updated would become the valid environmental review for projects in this area for the next five years. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Moffett. Commissioner Forrest?
What is the notice then for the comment period? Does it just get posted in publication?
The requirement through the state is that it gets mailed to the agencies. Actually, we're going to, we get to email it now, so that's kind of exciting. So we email it to the agencies, and then the only requirement is, is that you let the paper know. But we usually actually do a public notice in the paper, so they know.
Other questions or comments? One that I have is just with respect to this A U A R and how it interfaces with our role. Obviously, we advise the city council on the zoning code and overall planning issues. Does the ultimate adoption or acceptance of the A U A R, how does that affect our ability to amend our zoning code? Would it limit what we could do? Or, on the other end, would it compel us to do, to make certain changes to the zoning code?
It doesn't limit or compel you to change anything with your zoning code. It's a tool for if and when redevelopment or development comes in. Sometimes with A U Rs, there is a zoning that is needed to change, depending on what's being reviewed. But it doesn't force anybody's hand to do one thing one way or another.
So information for us in terms of what the impact of changes in density might be or what the impact, and as you said, other development scenarios? I don't know, Carrie, if you want to add anything to that?
The, when we went through that master plan, we did rezone the site. It was rezoned to mixed development district. So it's essentially those uses that I outlined. The north half is essentially zoned for housing. And then all the office shifted to the tower site. So I would anticipate any type of redevelopment that were to occur is going to probably need a rezoning. We didn't have the PUD tool at that time. Maybe this is appropriate for a PUD, maybe not. It's guided in our comprehensive plan for mixed use. So we're probably not looking at a comprehensive plan amendment unless there's additional height proposed or something like that. But in all likelihood, there would have to be some type of a rezoning associated with any redevelopment request.
Commissioner Schroder?
That was kind of my question, because when the master plan was presented to us, I asked the architect if he was presenting the best plan or if it was just the best plan that we were allowed, that he was allowed to develop. And at the time, Mr. May, I think, insightfully declined to respond. But, so that was really my question, too. We have a PUD now, and how would the presence, our ability to implement, or someone's ability to implement a PUD affect the scenarios that were framed in 2007 that are now being perpetuated in this update?
I don't think any development scenario, at least in our initial conversations with Hillcrest, would exceed the development scenarios that are outlined in the A U A R.
So under the environmental review and if this is approved, it caps development under any zoning scenario at the A U A R maximum, at any one of those scenarios? They can't go more than that without redoing the A U A R? Is that correct?
That is correct. Something could certainly be less than the density scenarios in here, and you wouldn't need to update your A U A R. It's just, anything above the scenarios. And so that is why, when you do an A U A R, you want one of the scenarios to be the most impactful, so you have flexibility for different scenarios, for reality to come in and what's going to be proposed, so.
Would it need an updating of the A U A R, or would it just call for some mitigation measures? For instance, you know, if we decided the density capacity was going to exceed what the wastewater treatment capabilities were, would the answer be just to develop wastewater treatment options?
If development came in or if the planning commissioner council were contemplating densities that were higher than outlined in the A U A R, you would be required to do an A U A R update, which would then look at the mitigation and say, is this still working?
That would then paint a new scenario and the consequences of that new scenario?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, that's the point that I was trying to make. By accepting this A U A R, it does render some aspects of our ordinance
Limited.
Limited, right. I mean, if we were to adopt or accept this, that becomes the parameters for how development happens, not our ordinance.
Unless we go through another A U A R, which is not an insignificant adventure.
So this becomes the rule that a developer will, that's one of the important things that I want to make sure we understand. This becomes the rule that we're all operating under, not our ordinance. Is that correct?
It's the universe, so to speak.
Well, I mean, in terms of development maximum, we can't exceed that without redoing it.
There were four scenarios, kind of the one being the least amount of development, all the way to number four, which was the most amount of development. The way the site was rezoned to mixed development was at development scenario two, so it was just above that minimum. So there's two more scenarios that contemplated a lot more density. If they wanted to get into that three or four, it would still take a change to the zoning ordinance. And even though the A U A R says that this area could accommodate that, given mitigation measures, you wouldn't be obligated to approve that development if you felt it was too dense for the site.
But, but we, if there was a scenario five, if we went to that density level, then we couldn't approve it even if we wanted to without a new A U A R?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's helpful. Other questions or comments? Commissioner Forrest?
I guess I'm just kind of curious about how this is working with the reuse, the development of existing buildings that's been going on.
It's a great segue.
Out of curiosity.
It's a great segue. I don't know if we have, because I think Mr. Tankenoff and Mr. Nelson are here to kind of give us a bird's eye view of what they're thinking about on behalf of the new owners of the property. I don't know if there's other questions for Ms. Moffett. We can certainly come back to you if there's something to discuss after that. But this might be a good time, gentlemen, for you to come up and give us a sense of, now that we've learned scenarios one, two, three, and four, and five, how you fit into that. And just so we're clear, I don't, I mean, we don't have an application in front of us. I know that you've been having some discussions with, there was a work session with the city council where you kind of tried to informally share some scenarios, planning commission members, some planning commission members were at that work session as well. And so this is, this is kind of in what we would understand as a, not even a formal sketch plan. This is just kind of sharing ideas and thoughts. Is that right?
Yes, Mr. Chair. This is, I guess, intended to be an introduction, if nothing else. Maybe a courtesy is even more appropriate to say it that way. Because while we've been in your community with different projects going back probably 10 or 12 years, we've been at Pentagon Park for about 10 months now, since we closed on the first phase of the project in September of 2012.
So go ahead. Why don't you introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about what you're thinking about?
Well, my name is Scott Tankenoff. I'm the managing partner of Hillcrest Development. It's a third-generation family business. Despite it being a family business, it is a very functional family business. And it's a business that's been around since 1948. And there's a lot of things that I think developers, I have a, we have a peer group as a developer, and sometimes developers aren't exactly functional. Maybe they get up and wave their arms around, and they overpromise too much and they underdeliver. We've gotten where we are by being very, very good at a few core principles and by being very, very focused and by not overpromising and not underdelivering. So that doesn't maybe seem as popular with our peer group. In some regards, our peer group kind of makes us look a little better. We're very, very good at adaptive reuse. So what we like to do, and what I have been fortunate enough to develop a skill set to do, is to go and solve puzzles, to go in and address properties that have issues. And Pentagon Park is a very good example of a project that has a tremendous amount of issues, and change has not been good for it. Economic revivals have not been good to it, and economic recessions have harmed it. So from the standpoint of what Hillcrest does, we're very, very good at adaptive reuse. We're very, very good at figuring out how to take something that's broken, festering, that is a negative impact on a community, and go in and come up with pragmatic approaches to it. And sometimes what we do, and in this case, we're doing that at Pentagon Park, is come up with a vision of, how do we stabilize it? How do we, in a sense, freeze time so that we can unlock what its highest and best potential should be? Because I feel in the field of development, and what I feel I've learned is that time sometimes is the root of all evil. It sometimes compels developers or owners of property to do things that they really should not want to do, but maybe they don't have a choice. And from my standpoint, that's what we're trying to do, is be very practical, set very reasonable goals and bars, and hit them. So actually, in September, it was September 4th of '12, I went to a work session of the city council, and I believe the planning commission, I think it was a joint session, because it was upstairs. And one of the things we did was, we did an introduction similar to this, but we didn't have a lot of pictures. We didn't have a lot of data yet. We talked about our background. We didn't have any horrible pictures of how Pentagon Park looked, with good pictures of how we've stabilized some parts of it. But what we said was, judge us on our results. Judge us not on what we're going to tell you we're going to do, but judge us on when we actually make some progress and hold us to a reasonable standard. And I think that that's what we would expect from our neighbors and from any municipality. So with that, I'm going to start going through the slide presentation briefly. Again, third-generation family business. We've had over 80 successful projects to date. Most of them are internally financed, which means we're trying not to go to a lender, which is part of what got Pentagon Park in trouble, in my opinion, in the first place, and borrow a lot of money and make a bunch of promises or blow a lot of smoke. What we try to do is be self-sufficient and be able to address issues directly. We are specialists in commercial redevelopment. We don't have any housing. We don't build any real retail projects. We're very, very good at taking existing properties and making them function again. properties and making them function again. So what we have, here we go. So I have some, a few pictures of some existing projects that we've done. One is Assistance and Business Center, and I'll go through these slides fairly quickly. Again, it was a different type of building, given that it was a pre-war building, but all new infrastructure, and it looked a lot different than when we first started the project. This project was developed in the late 90s, and it was a project that we did for U.S. These are now some pictures of Pentagon Park. You're going to see some things that we've stabilized and some things before we stabilized them. And what we're doing with Pentagon Park right now is, we're actually taking, and you're going to see some aerials here, we're taking the east end of the campus, which is closer to Park Lawn, and there are a handful of buildings there that were stabilized. And we actually have five buildings that were in the process of stabilizing on that east end of the campus, which again is north of 77th, adjacent to Park Lawn. And stabilization means many things to many people, but what it means to us is taking a product that looks like this, not as good as it looked in 1969 when it was built, and trying to make it look like that. Trying to actually stabilize it in a way that's meaningful, but not necessarily stabilize it so far that you can't bring it to its highest and best use. And what that means is, one day, maybe in the not-too-distant future, this building could end up coming down, and the highest and best use could go in its place. But what we've needed to do as the owner, is we've needed to stem the tide of a significant amount of operating losses there, because the way the buildings were being operated, that particular building's 50,000 square feet, that building had, I think, 5,000 square feet of tenancy in it. So you're operating a 50,000 square foot building, and essentially, you have 10% occupancy. That's not good. So what we've had to do is, we've had to go in and go to many of these buildings. There's eight buildings that look just like 4600 used to look. And we've basically had to figure out how to shut down some buildings, how to not operate all these buildings, how to take five or six of them and stabilize them, so that we can take about 300 to 350,000 square feet out of the roughly, a little less than 700,000 square feet, put clients into it, stabilize it, but not go so far that we can't still get it to highest and best use. And that highest and best use could mean a number of different things. So it's important to note that it's not just about how it may appeal for myself, for my company, or for you. It also has to appeal to the marketplace. These are buildings that have a terrible negative stigma. Pentagon Park is synonymous in many regards. If you go to pre-2013, go back 10, 15 years, it means failure. It's not successful. The A U A R is living proof of it. From 2007, nothing got done. And candidly, since the 90s, nothing has really been done. So, part of what we have to do is, we have to convince people that have real live businesses in and outside of your community, to have confidence and faith that they can go to a building like 4600 that looked like a bomb hit it, looked like nobody cared, smelled bad, looked bad. A number of things just wrong with it. Not good natural light, not good infrastructure, poor mechanical systems. It just was bad. We have to convince them that we can actually make it good, that it can be desirable, that it can be something where they would be proud to have a client come and see it. And there's a lot of office space out there. So we have to be able to make it economical, functional, and also flexible, so we can achieve eventually the highest and best uses. So this is what it looked like before. This is the 4620 building. Again, you can see stairways are falling off the outside of the building, blacktop's breaking up, there's some really bad soil conditions, and there's not a lot of glass going into the building. Windows are very small. This is a picture of how the 4600 building looks like now. You can see there's different styles of glass that's here. We actually built a showroom in that building with the intent of specifically being able to give people a real live experience coming into this park, so that they actually see a real live space that's been redone with glass that is meaningful, with infrastructure that's meaningful, so that we don't have to just get up and wave our arms around and try to convince people that we're really going to do it. They have to be able to sink their teeth into it. And a real live example is so much better than even something that you can see online. Some inside pictures of how it used to look. And then some inside pictures of how it looks now. We have three different types of ceiling treatments in here, because it is a showroom. And part of what we want to be able to demonstrate to people is that they can have finishes that will look different. They can have finishes that may be, may feel edgy or exciting, similar to the warehouse district, similar to places that really don't exist in the Southwest right now. There aren't a lot of people that are taking these types of buildings, driving light into them, adding infrastructure, and also trying to make them fun and exciting, a place that people get excited to go to work. That's part of what's going on at Pentagon Park now. So here are some shots of some windows that are going in. And we've not renovated the space except for putting windows in. And this is, these are some shots of a, actually a company that came from Edina by the name of E Home, as their space was being finished in the 4600 building. So to talk a little bit about what it is we're trying to do right now in the interim, which I think, you know, starts to answer questions of what's really going on here? What's been happening since last September? With the support of the city of Edina, and specifically Kerry and Bill, we have been able to apply and receive two grants from the Met Council TBRA to go out and abate over a million one in lead-based paint and asbestos within these buildings. And I can't tell you how important that is, and what a difference that makes in being able to go in and take out those substances and do it upfront. It makes a huge, huge difference. So we feel really good about being able to do that in the fall, as well as in the spring. Those are, I believe, in both the fall and spring rounds, either the, in the top two or in the top three of all grants that were distributed by the Met Council TBRA fund. We've been able to, again, stabilize certain select buildings. There have been five of them. There's going to be a sixth. New energy-efficient lighting. We've been able to improve HVAC systems, again, so that clients can go in and actually utilize a space instead of trying to work off of a, in some cases, 45-year-old mechanical system. We've remodeled all the common areas of the buildings, the exteriors of the buildings. We have major resurfacing of parking lots and landscaping projects that are in process right now, assuming we can get more than two days of not rain. We've been able to customize many of these spaces for tenant improvements, and give the tenants their own feeling that they've been able to customize the space to what their needs are. And again, some windows have been replaced with energy-efficient glass to this point, so. There's a couple of quotes from past projects, which are nice. But essentially, what we are focused on doing is stabilizing Pentagon Park and being able to work collaboratively with staff to come up with the best uses for what it should be. We are working on trying to stabilize the north end of the campus. The south end of the campus, in our opinion, is certainly the best suited for new development in a quicker fashion. We're working with staff to try to figure out exactly what that should be. So we don't have anything specific to talk about yet, but again, it's a wonderful location. It has great access, obviously, to freeways. It has great access into the France Avenue area, as well as to West. It has a very important amenity, which is a 42-acre publicly-owned amenity to the north, which is Richards. The ability for, to have 40 acres of private land in this location, and to be able to affect its change, is an unbelievable opportunity. There's been a tremendous amount of pain and anguish for us to get to this point. It's, this, this isn't easy, what's going on. There's a reason why nobody else wanted to buy it. We like solving puzzles. We like figuring things out. There've been a lot of puzzles there. There's probably a few more, but I think in what, hopefully, what I want for you to feel like you'll have comfort with us is, we're going to be honest with you. We're transparent. We're going to be straightforward. Hillcrest does have a partner in this project, which is a gentleman by the name of Mark Ronhorst. Mark ran Opus Corporation. And Mark's family has been invested in Edina, Minnesota, in a number of different projects with Opus, as well as with his family. Mark couldn't be here tonight, but I, it's an interesting twist of fate that Jerry Ronhorst, his father, built all of these buildings, and that Mark has a kid, whether he on Saturdays went over and was able to operate the tower crane or other things. There's been a Ronhorst connection to the site for decades. So it's, it's a good combination. And for me, what Mark provides us with as a minority partner is a tremendous amount of new construction expertise. Because candidly, what Hillcrest is great at, Mark is not great at, and what Mark is great at, I could take the next 100 years and I wouldn't become great at. So what we're really trying to do is do the things we're best at. So I don't know if there's any questions or anything I can answer.
Thank you, Mr. Tankenoff. Questions? Commissioner Forrest?
Tonight's my question. I do want to applaud the fact that you're keeping this communication open with us and with the public, sharing all this with us. It's great. And I, I really like your concept of adaptive reuse and stabilizing existing buildings. When you talk about the south end, is that the towers part that you're referring to?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the part that's most likely to see actual redevelopment, potentially, from what you just said, right?
Yes. I believe what you're going to see is new development that's there. There was a plan that, again, was passed in 2007, which there's been a lot of discussion about. And it's, it's a plan that candidly is, while parts of it could be relevant, its shape, its size, things will be different. And they should be different, because candidly, that was 2007, and life is just very different in 2013. And I have no doubt in 2014, it will continue to be radically different than it was before. We're not certain what those uses will be. They will be practical uses. They'll be market-driven. I think we all have, and we've been talking a lot with staff, and we meet with staff two times a month to talk specifically about the project, to talk about what's going on with the stabilization, as well as with the big picture. So what that's going to be remains to be seen, but yeah, there's, there's a lot to be figured out yet, but there's tremendous opportunity.
I guess, then, what I was wondering was, the buildings that you've put a lot into already, granted, you said someday they may be replaced, and that's realistic, but are there any limitations on the Met Council grants, or just your expectation because of your investment, as far as, I think they're going to be around a while, right?
It depends.
Okay.
And I know that sounds almost kind of like a strange answer, but the way that we've set this up, some of the buildings could remain for a handful of years. Some of the buildings could remain quite a bit longer. The way we have the Met Council grants set up, and what we've tried to do is be really intelligent and very efficient with what we're doing. All the work that we're doing in abating the asbestos and the lead-based paint will be very effective, whether we reuse the buildings or demolish the buildings. And so we've really tried to take advantage of that. So you'll notice there are certain buildings that have been, that have new windows. And then you'll notice the first building that we renovated, which is 4570, does not have new windows. 4570 would have to, we'd have to bait the asbestos that's above and below those light panels that are the glass panels outside, because there's a piece of transite above and below. We've chosen to encapsulate that building for a variety of reasons. I think the beauty of this project, of what we've tried to do with the formula, we have a lot of different options. And I think that options and choices are what this is all about. It's about not being constricted into, you have to only renovate, or you have to only build new. I, I think what we are trying to place in front of us is the best opportunity, again, to utilize not only the market, but to be successful in whether it's going to be some adaptive reuse or all-new construction. We've even, from our leases, tried to be very flexible and very upfront with our clients in saying, there's a possibility we may need to look to terminate your leases at some point. And so we've actually provided for that with every single building that we've renovated, so that we have some flexibility, and so everybody knows what's going on upfront. To get a client to be able to be comfortable with that, you have to be able to provide them with good options, clear communication, honesty, and better pricing in the marketplace. That's a big part of the formula. What we had to do was, we had to come up with a formula that would be able to do that. The stabilization formula is working well. The real question is, how long should we keep stabilizing? That's the real question. And is that really what the community and everybody wants? Is that the best, the highest and best use? And that, that's what I think is going to get figured out here, or should be.
Mr. Tankenoff, are there, you heard the A U A R presentation. Any concerns from your perspective about the capacity? You know, this, we heard about scenarios one, two, three, four. Is there a scenario five in your, in your future? And do you have concerns about the updated A U A R?
Mr. Chair, I, I don't. I think the updated A U A R, what it does is, it provides a tool, so that we, we need to know what, what we have to do to satisfy it a minimum, and it is a minimum. And I think the city needs to understand what is in or out of compliance. Will there be a scenario five, or a scenario six, or on up? I don't think so. I think there's enough, the, the problem with the site in 2007 was, it had a lot of density. It had a lot of different things being packed into it. Density will be important. I don't see, I personally, from where I sit right now, don't see a scenario that goes beyond the four. I just don't.
Okay.
I don't think that that's, that's not what I can foresee, and I don't believe that that's what staff has been able to foresee either. I think it's, I think it's more likely that the, again, the A U A R will continue to be a tool. And the real question will be, is what, how do we lay out what the appropriate uses are, and, and figure that through with the current zoning, or with a PUD process, or whatever is appropriate?
I just want to make sure we're tethering kind of your vision for the future to, you know, this regulatory tool that we're developing, and make sure we're not unduly restricting our options, recognizing that you're going to have choices to make, the city's going to have choices to make, and we won't know which choices we'll want to make until later, but at least we keep everybody's options open.
Thank you.
Other comments, questions? Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kerry, so what do we need to do from here?
You really don't need to take any, any formal action.
Okay.
It's just recording your comments, and minutes get forwarded on to the city council when they kind of go through the same discussion.
Okay. Anything else that commissioners want to add to the record that we've kind of fleshed out? Don't see anything. All right. Thank you, Ms. Moffett. Thank you, Mr. Tankenoff, Mr. Nelson. Appreciate you being here. All right. Next up on the agenda is our zoning ordinance update for residential development. I think, from what I understand, someone going to fetch Wayne? There he is.
There he is.
Have to run out in the hall and get him. So we've got a couple of things to do. This is a process that we've been going through since October or November of last year, and we're bringing it to a conclusion, from our perspective, anyway. What I hope to do tonight is take some votes on these various options we've got for recommendations to the city council for ordinance amendments in our zoning code to address some of the issues we've been wrestling with. At our last meeting, we went through nine areas of potential changes and discussed each of those. We gave some additional advice and direction to staff in terms of changes that we wanted to see to the draft language that has come back to us. Now Kerry's going to walk through that. Before Kerry does that, I'd like Wayne to go through some discussion on drainage. That was a big topic that we talked about at our last meeting, in terms of understanding better what the ground rules are, so that we can adequately make recommendations to the council about amendments that would be necessary to some of our stormwater management regulations in the zoning code. So what I'd like to do is start with Wayne, go through some of that discussion, and then Kerry, have you go through the nine categories. We did take public comment at our last meeting. It was a public hearing, and we've received that comment. We've also had engagement throughout this process. Commissioners Forrest and Potts and Platter all led a process that included at least two community engagement sessions. So I think we've done a good job of trying to get input from the community, and we're at the point where we need to make some decisions about recommendations we make to the council. So what I'm going to suggest when we go through these nine items is, we just take them one at a time, and we, we actually come to a vote as a commission on each of the nine items as to whether we want to put language forward or not. And, and I'm going to encourage- as to whether we want to put language forward or not. And I'm going to encourage planning commissioners who vote no on a particular item to elaborate to the best they can the reasons they are. And the reason I say that is I think it's really valuable for the council to hear when there's alternative viewpoints, so that they have the benefit of the debate and, you know, the amount that we've looked at this and they understand all sides of it. So with that, Wayne, if you want to give us a little background on drainage issues.
Chair and commission tonight, I actually have Ross Bittner with us also. I don't know if you've met Ross before. He's our environmental engineer.
Welcome, Ross.
So he's been heavily involved in the discussion here also about the drainage. We've looked at the proposed changes to the drainage, and what we're suggesting is to make these minor changes right now, and actually what we need to have is more discussion on the drainage itself. Because as I was saying in the Living Streets item that you had tonight, it was that on the drainage, if we're adding, there's a couple of issues. One is if you're adding a lot on previous surface to the private, on the private side, that affects our public system for flood storage and such. And then when we're talking about different rates coming off, what is actually is that rate? What size of event are we actually planning to? And typically, our projects are to a 10, 50, and 100-year event. So on the surface runoff is that, what we're suggesting is that you change on that is to change them to basically stating that it's, instead of channel, that you convey the water. And that gives us more latitude as how that water is actually being conveyed itself. And then the other aspect is that this is, part of the building permit is that the applicant has to submit a gradient erosion control plan along with a stormwater management plan. And what that management plan is essentially is, where does that water go? Not so much the management plan on the site itself, but as it's going downstream, is it crossing areas that don't have easements to legally go across some of those areas? Is it going into the public system? If it's going into the public system, what is it doing to that public system? So that's why we're suggesting some of these changes to it. Not sure, Ross, if you maybe have anything else to add to that. Okay. I'm not sure if that's what you were looking for.
Well, that's a good...
If I could just add that this language that's on the screen, this was taken from the recently adopted construction management plan language that's required for a tear-down rebuild. So kind of a duplication here.
Well, just to kind of back up a little bit in terms of what's driving this, I think it's fair to say during this process, we've heard from a lot of folks who have really felt like the new development next door to them ends up putting water in their basement, or putting water on their driveway, or putting water wherever, that it's causing problems on neighboring properties. So we're not doing a very good job of making sure that when there's new development, that stormwater is not causing harm to the properties around that redeveloped property. In our packets tonight, there's a copy of an email from a resident that, you know, tells a story about water in her basement after a big storm event. And it is, it's just a good illustration of what we've been hearing for six or seven months as we've gone through this process about people who, you know, experience this kind of thing. And I think, I know personally, I think this is one of the big issues in this redevelopment ordinance review that we're tackling, to make sure that we are solving this problem. Up until now, we just haven't done a good enough job of solving it. And I think the language you're talking about seems to me to be a good start to doing that. I have some questions about it. I'm wondering if, you know, as we, one of the things we had on our plate before kind of suggested that if there was a particular drainage path that existed prior to the redevelopment, that the redeveloped property could continue to use that drainage path. With this language, are we suggesting that those drainage paths need to be eliminated, and you need to convey everything to either the public stormwater system, or percolation, or retention on your own property?
I think, can Ross, may you jump in here if you could, but I think, you know, we talked about that, too, is what, how much rate, you know, if you say that you have to maintain the same rate on that path as was before the development. And that might be one way that we look at it. The other way would be is, okay, you can't add to a typical rate of a typical storm, so you're not adding more volume that's going down, down through that pathway itself. And then what do you do with that water? Do you put it into infiltration systems on site that, and a lot of edina won't build infiltrate. Some areas of edina will build infiltrate the soils. A lot of them, if you have real heavy clays, then what happens to that water if it's sitting there and you're pumping out after the event? Or do we, you know, do you end up with a lot of little cisterns throughout the city, and is that what you want in the private development, you know, residential areas?
Ross, you have anything to add to that?
Is this one?
Yep.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, as we saw the initial language that had a rate standard, we really started to dive into the details about, you know, what are we requiring of that developer? And I think the direction that we're recommending doesn't say that you can't, you know, continue to drain in that direction. The preference would be to take it to a public system. We'd start to get into the policy of, you know, how much water or the peak rate of water. Then you really start to necessitate an engineered solution. So I guess the recommendation right now, you know, the real change is to take that same damage standard and some sort of a professional engineering review and apply that here as you did in the tear-down rebuild.
So help me understand, when you say damage standard, what do you mean by that?
So a rate or a volume standard would be a very specific and numeric exercise, and that suits itself very well for a large site. But when you have such a micro-sized drainage scale, it gets a lot more difficult to engineer solutions that are going to be durable over the course of the next 10, 20, 30, 40 years, you know, without getting into potentially, you know, requiring, you know, specific maintenance contracts that are going to, you know, travel with a house. And, you know, before you start opening up that box, I think, you know, just, you know, following the same, you know, a best practices check in handling the, you know, what actually happens on that site to make sure there is no damage, and getting a professional involved is probably, you know, a step a little bit short of, you know, full engineering and full legal requirements on every lot for, you know, micro-scale drainage issues.
So one of the things that this language talks about is the plans must be approved by the city engineer. So with both of you here, can you explain to us what, when you examine plans like this, understanding what we're trying to accomplish, what standard do you apply? How do you figure out whether the plans ought to be approved or not?
When we're looking at the plans, and obviously, I don't look at every plan. I have staff that looks at the plans, but we train the staff to look at the plans. And what they're looking at is where the existing drainage is today, and what's the proposed drainage. And one is if it's, like in one case where it was actually going directed towards another home, and so we had them change up the drainage swell so that it was going, not going directly at the home and going towards the backyard, essentially.
So that's direction.
Direction.
So then are there calculations about how quickly that water is going to run there? Is that, I mean, I'm trying to get a handle on the data that you're going to see in a stormwater management plan that's going to allow you to know that it's not going to be worse on the next-door property under the plan that they have.
And that's what we're, as you go forward with, the way that this language is set up is that we can require that, is that we would be looking at that particular property and say, yeah, we need to have the stormwater calculations of what your rates and volumes are coming off the site, what was pre-existing, what's going to be post-construction.
So you'd have a baseline rate, and then you'd have a post-construction rate, and you'd be able to tell whether they're increasing or not?
Right, increasing. And then what, like Ross says, what potential damages that might happen if you allow them to do what they're proposing to do on the post, for the post-construction part of it. So essentially, what we're, I think what we're, we would set this thing up as is that we look at, okay, what are they proposing to do, and is that affecting the properties adjacent to them, or is there better ways of handling the runoff? Is there better ways that we could channel the roof drains out to the public storm sewer system if that exists out in the front or side yard, or even the rear yard of a property itself?
I can tell there's some rustling up here, so there's other people who want to get involved in this. But before I let go for a second, I just want to make sure you have the tools you need in the code when the building permit is being pulled so that you're able to accomplish what we're trying to accomplish here. I don't understand all of the calculations and the technicalities, but what I know is I don't want any more neighbors coming to us saying that they got water in their basement after the new house was built, when they didn't have water in the basement before. So that's kind of my goal here.
And I think we'll have the tools, but I think we, like I say, we still need to study this further because we, as we set up those requirements, we're going to have to set up, you know, what size events we have. And so if you have a real big event, somebody still might get water on their property or within their structure. You know, hopefully it's not from the adjoining property, but in the real big events here, you know, we're not going to be protected from those, just from your own property itself. So I think we have to be really clear that as we look at these, we're trying to make sure that these properties are not adding any additional potential damage to the adjoining properties in the future than what's happening there today. And in some cases, they might even be able to correct what might be happening on our property. So it's not all just brand-new construction.
So if you're chronically getting water in the basement from the next-door property, maybe the redevelopment will make things better because it'll stop it from happening?
Right, exactly.
Commissioner Platter.
I was just looking at this, and some of the language that's stricken is the first part where it says, "Existing drainage rate shall not be increased in direction, not altered or redirect water." And I'm wondering, should, I don't think the rest of your language is necessarily explicit enough to cover that. And I, you talked about standards, and I know, you know, a stormwater management plan's going to have certain aspects to it, but to me, this doesn't go far enough to be very explicit on what you're requiring. It says you want a plan, but it doesn't say what that plan must do. Unless I'm missing something here, I don't see that it says, you know, adverse impacts, but those are pretty vague things in my two senses. I think we need, for these situations, a much more, non-subjective guidelines, if you will, for this than leaving it more open. Because, to your point on residential, it is a little bit different than commercial, and you don't have as much, I would say, safety factor as you would on a commercial site necessarily to do something. So I don't know if anyone else wants to jump in on that, but...
Commissioner Schroeder.
I kind of do quickly because I want to make certain that we're not necessarily defining the specific standard in the ordinance. I think that could be handled administratively, as long as we know what the goal is. I think, and I think that the difference in what's proposed here is, we would have developers come forward with arrows on a map, and that was how they were handling stormwater. And now we're actually requiring an engineer to look at it. And I think that they could engage Director Hool and his staff in terms of defining what the standards need to be. And as we look across the regulatory environment of stormwater management, even in the last couple of years, it's changed dramatically what watersheds are requiring. And I don't want to have to be updating our ordinance in order to keep up to date with how dramatically other agencies are dealing with stormwater management parameters.
So do you think that, I mean, it seems to me that prevent damage to adjacent property and prevent adverse impacts to the public stormwater drainage system are the two standards that are in here. And I guess the question to respond to Commissioner Platter is, is that, is that enough? I get what you're saying. We don't want to detail out so many cubic inches or some standard that might become obsolete in a year.
I agree with that. Is this explicit enough to tell what you want at the end? That's my question.
I think there are still standards, but I'm suggesting that they be addressed administratively as opposed to in the ordinance.
But are you comfortable that those, that that language of prevent damage to adjacent property and prevent adverse impacts is sufficient to guide our staff in making sure that they're applying it? Commissioner Grable.
I agree with Commissioner Schroeder. It seems to me that this language puts the onus on the developer to come forward first with a plan from a registered professional engineer to describe what's going to happen and what's expected to happen. And it seems to me that once the developer does that, if the plan does not work that way, the bar has already been set from a liability standpoint, that the affected homeowner has some cause of action against the developer and the new homeowner. I would suggest...
And the engineer?
Pardon me?
And the engineer.
And the engineer, right. I would suggest, or I would recommend that the council hear from the city attorney on this. I don't have enough recollection from law school about adjacent property owners and damage to property, but it seems to me, if, I want to hold the property owner who's developing his property, I want to hold them responsible for damage to the adjoining property owner. It seems to me that this is a good start to do that. Also, with respect to the comment about not redirecting water, I mean, you can come up with a plan where it's not redirecting water, it's just keeping the water there that it is. If we get too specific, I like what has been said about handling this on an administrative basis, where you know and we know that we want to mitigate damage to adjoining property owners.
Just one second. To Commissioner Grable's question about the city attorney, has he reviewed this language?
He wrote that language.
Very good, very good. So hopefully, he's still feeling good about it. We're looking for recourse. Is this, did he say in writing it that this is a model taken from other cities, or are we stepping out from what other cities are doing? Or how does this, either Carrie or Wayne or Ross?
I don't recall having a specific discussion on that. Maybe you guys...
I asked him for examples from other cities, and he didn't have any at all. And he kind of left it up to staff and our consultants. Actually, we brought in Bob Overmeyer from bar engineering into the discussion, who was actually the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District engineer also, and we use him as a lot of our stormwater stuff. So we had him at the table with us when we were proposing this language. And so we, you know, I think we had the right people looking at it. And then I believe we ran it by the city attorney and said it looked good, so, yeah.
Commissioner Forrest.
Kind of related to all of that, I have a few questions here. What are the city's options to enforce this if a builder or developer doesn't do what he says or she is saying they're going to do? The language here, does it adequately address the elimination of existing ponding areas or that are there and serving the adjacent homes well now, but then they're replaced with a building? Is there, do you have any suggestions as to whether or not we could address that in the ordinance? And I did have a question. My first question was, do we have the staff to review all of these things? But it sounds like you've got a system in place now. And then if, I imagine you kind of have a general idea as far as the soil conditions around the city. Does this empower you to demand that somebody provide a soil study if you think that their plan may not be compatible with it? And then what about if somebody, you know, does, there's some gross changes to the actual grading after the occupancy is attained or something? In other words, the builder just says, I'm just going to put this off and I'll do it afterward, and as a landscaping project, but then after... afterward and, as a landscaping project, but it, then afterward significantly affects things. What can the city do to address non-compliance issues so that the homeowners in, you know, the adjacent homeowners can say, okay, there's a process in place here, the city will go after them for this and if not, then I can go after them for that? But I just want to make sure we're not missing some things that we've had in our previous discussions.
So for the first one on enforcement is that this would be, this falls into place when a permit is pulled for, for the property. So, so you'd be enforced per permit, basically, the, the grading permit, I believe, is what, what that would fall under.
What if they don't provide?
Pardon me, if they don't?
If they don't follow the, the grading plan that they provided for you?
If they don't, if, if they don't follow the grading plan, I mean, if it's on a tear-down rebuild or a large addition, is that they wouldn't get their, their final permit approved, but it comes down to a, since you wouldn't be able to utilize a facility? And then I would have to go back to Kerry for, if, if they need correction on it, I, there's, there's routes to, to, to correct plans or grade, grading plans or, or in place that, that if they, they don't do it, that we can go after them and, and get it completed, I believe.
Well, and so one of the questions, I get that there's a sign-off on the building permit, but I think what Commissioner, one of the questions Commissioner Forrest raises was, well, so what if there's subsequent, you get the building permit, you get to sign off, everything's good, but there's subsequent measures taken which undermine this? Certainly we have language in here that says you have to adhere to that stormwater management plan, but how would we go about enforcing that?
With the, with the new, for a tear-down rebuild, we're getting that demolition permit and the city collects that, that bond. So we've got monies if they're not cooperative, that we could hire someone to go in and do that and then draw down from that letter of creditor bond that they submit.
But I'm talking about a couple of years later, you know, everything's all done, settled, maybe the house even gets sold, somebody else comes in and changes the configuration that changes the drainage. Do we have any recourse in that situation?
What about the weekend warrior? That, I mean, does this, this is for, you know, new builds and major remodels, but should there, I don't know, it's a can of worms maybe, you know, if you change it on a weekend project to regrade it and retaining walls or, or something that causes something, it's, is...
Well, that's still going to trigger a building permit.
They'll, they'll trigger a grading permit. If, if they're, if they're doing that much work, it's, which is 10 cubic yards or more requires a grading permit. So if they're, if they're doing that much work, the, the building department could come in and say, you should have had a grading permit, now you're going to apply for one.
So what do you do?
Tear it down.
Yeah, but that doesn't happen. And what I'm really concerned about is that there's a really, there's some clear-cut methods of enforcement that the city has, preferably in ordinance, it's at least alluded to, so that there's some teeth to whatever comes here, especially with the major projects.
Well, and I, I'm satisfied that we've got good teeth, Kerry's observation about demolition permit, et cetera. While it's all happening, my concern is after, you know, and there's a subsequent, doesn't rise to the level of building permit, but there's some, some stuff that goes on that causes the problem, do we have a way, the, the language clearly says you got to adhere to it, so I assume that means, you know, you've got a grading drainage stormwater management plan on file and if you go back out there and find out they're not adhering to it, that, I'm wondering how we make them then adhere to it?
Yeah, we, we could try to go after them for this provision of the ordinance, it would be a zoning violation and we'd give them 30 days to correct it.
All right.
And if they don't?
Then we'd have to take them to court?
Right. It'd be like any, you know, if you suddenly...
Yeah, I know, I know, I understand that, but my, my concern is we keep getting the communication from different residents about things that have happened that were missed because it, we didn't have, it wasn't something that was regularly inspected as part of the existing process or that the builder just did it the way they wanted to anyway and somehow it got signed off on. Or, you know, it's, it's the money that's involved, the damage may be greater than what that, the escrowed money is. I, I just want to...
So what would you like to see that isn't here?
I just, that there's something about, I don't even know what, what there is for enforcement. All I hear is the city says you shouldn't do that. And I'm not out there, I'm not in the trenches like you guys are. So you, you are more familiar with what you actually have done and what you can do. And I don't know, and I think it's important for the residents to know, you know, we're changing this language, but what good is it going to do if, if we have something, you know, what, you tell me, what do you do if somebody's really nasty and just does what they want to do anyway? And, you know, that you sign off on it or whatever and then they go back in and put up a six-foot retaining wall, I mean, after everything's been approved? What do you, what are your options?
Like Plan Teak says, is, is you, you give them notice and then if they don't comply with that notice, you bring them to court. And that has happened in some cases. And usually if you threaten the court, usually it gets taken care of fairly quickly.
Okay, so this is, that's the, that's what I wanted to have clear because there's no fine system or anything like that in place, it's just a, it's kind of an all or nothing kind of thing then?
I believe so, yep.
The fine's not what you want.
No, I...
You want the, you want the, you want the problem mitigated. And what happens, they go to court and if they don't change it, they get an order from the court to either change it or tear it down and the problem is then mitigated. The fine doesn't do anything.
That's fine, I just want to know, you have somebody who's a neighbor now, who's got water in their basement because of something, maybe it looked good on paper or on the survey, I mean, what are these people, they're thinking, what does this, what good does this language do me as a resident if they go through the process and it didn't work?
They have their means made, so...
Yeah, I just...
What are our plans for maintaining the stormwater management plan? Do we record it?
No, actually not, because that, that's part of the, the actual permit, so it wouldn't be a recordable device itself. The, the plan is actually a paper plan.
Right, so where do we, so my, again, my scenario is five years from the time we closed out the building permit, now we got problems. We go to the city file where the stormwater management plan is and we pull that?
You, you, and obviously you do the, the research on, on that if you have issues with it, but the stormwater management plan, if you had a, a lot that was in the middle of a block and they, and we require the stormwater management plan to look at what, where's that water going up and down the block? Within that five years, you could probably have two or three other tear-down rebuilds. And so as we're looking at that, you, you got to piece all those stormwater management plans together so that everybody's working in sync essentially over, over time.
Right, but you'd at least know for one particular property, you'd have a plan on file that you could then take out to the property and see that it's being, that the grading and the management is as it was in the plan?
Right, yep, that's correct, yes.
I'm going back to that whole thing about soils or unique drainage patterns and things like that. I wonder if it would be helpful to even put in something, I don't know if it's necessary, but language says that you're authorized to request additional information beyond this plan if, if they wanted to. Maybe it's already an implied thing in the permitting process, so it wouldn't be needed?
I would, as an engineer, what the, the plans must be approved by the city engineer is that, is that whatever we require is that. And then in certain cases of the, of the city, you know, if we're down in the southeast portion of the city where you have really granular, nice, you know, granular soils, is that, is that we really recommend doing rain gardens and filtration, those types of things. If we're other parts of the city, let's say over by Reddison Park where you, you can't get rid of a drop of water, we'd say try to get that to our storm sewer system and, and then we'll, we'll help you out from, from that aspect.
I do like that you have that discretion, that's good.
Other questions, observations? All right, very good. Thank you, Wayne, thank you, Ross. I think that takes care of part of number one for you, Kerry. At least you're making progress.
The second part of that is the retaining walls and since we have Ross and Wayne here, we can...
Yeah, don't go anywhere, guys.
In general, though, engineering was comfortable with a three-foot setback for a retaining wall over four feet tall, so that language remains.
At one point we talked about the possibility of terracing, you know, kind of requiring an additional setback for every so many feet high of walls. But I know I, when I raised that, I was cautioned by staff that there's parts of the city that you just couldn't possibly do that, that you need retaining walls that high. Is that, Ross and Wayne, is that consistent with your impression? So you would, you wouldn't recommend that we be, you know, if you're going to have a 20-foot retaining wall, that we, that we require it to be terraced, or are some circumstances where it's okay for it to be that tall?
I would always recommend that they terrace it if they can. In some parts of the city, it's, it's difficult to, to do that. I mean, if you're on the west side where it's pretty, pretty hilly, it's, it's, a lot of cases, it's difficult to do that. Anything over four feet has to be engineered and what I...
So the engineering would, would drive whether you can make it happen in one sheer retaining wall or whether you have to terrace it back?
Right, and I'd, and I'd also caution, even though we have the four feet, I know some developers have played with that where they have three feet, terrace it back, another three feet. And I think in some soil conditions, you got to be a little careful with that, 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 because you're holding back all that, that's, that soil, so you still have your, you know, your sheer angles that are coming, coming down from that. So I, so I, that's where we, we really, as we're reviewing these plans, is that even if it's terrace, we, we need to look at and say, should it, should we have a structural, soils engineer or even a structural engineer look at it?
So when you look at that, would you aggregate if there's a three-foot retaining wall and then, and then a, an additional setback and another three-foot retaining wall, you call that a six-foot retaining wall for purposes of engineering?
No, that's not a, that's not the way it's interpreted today, but that's what I'd like to start seeing.
And is there anything we need to put in the code to make sure that you have the ability to do that?
I'm not sure.
Put some overall grade elevation, you know, not just a four-foot retaining wall, but somehow the overall, so you're catching, if someone comes in with six three-foot increments, right, then they don't need a permit, right? I mean, in theory?
Commissioner Potts.
Yeah, I think what we're wrestling with here is that this language allows somebody to engineer their way around practically anything and cut the top off a hill if they want to, as long as they can hold the soil back physically. And we want to allow that sort of radical change to be made to Adonis topography.
Commissioner Shear.
I noted in some of the materials that you provided us, Kerry, from other city regulations, there's the observation that the city of Minneapolis only allows, quote, retaining walls where natural grade is retained. This type of regulation can prohibit a property owner from flattening out their yard by bringing in fill. That was an appealing comment to me because I think that's really in large part what we're attempting to do, not, not only to, you know, not have people walk out their back doors and face walls at their neighbor's house, but it's the flattening of the yards that seems to be creating these in certain parts of town.
I was going to offer a very similar comment to what Commissioner Platter brought up. What we're really talking about is retained earth and not just the retaining wall. And I think we ought to be looking at not the structure, but what we're actually doing to the topography as, as Commissioner Potts indicated as well.
So suggestions on how we might accomplish that in the language?
I like the, the recommendation of, of looking at the cumulative change in elevation. Yeah, that's, and that, that that's looked at and that that triggers the need for, possibly the need for a building permit as well, because all of that stuff is going to have to work together anyway to be able to let the water percolate down through safely and everything, so.
Does that go to, does that go to Commissioner Shear's point about, you know, looking at whether we're leveling off property as opposed to...
A-13. So the water in your back end.
A-13?
A-13 is the retaining wall, natural grade, common by the city of Minneapolis, and it appears to go on, I think it is, right? On A-14, I think.
Not to play devil's advocate, but that, does, does that make lots unbuildable?
Does it make lots?
Unbuildable. Or would it...
It, it could probably derive design on some lots, I think.
That it would be a variance then or something, is that what...
Well, they could certainly come for a variance and ask if they could build a wall...
Well, if it's a natural grade and you've already got a house on it, then presumably you've figured out how to build a house on, to the natural grade. I think the situation where the Commissioner Shear is identifying is you've got the, you know, you got the house and then the lot dips down to a garage and when it's, when it's torn down, people want to raise where the garage was and flatten it off by creating a big retaining wall.
Yeah, you're making a terrace essentially is what you're doing.
Right, I, I don't think it makes a lot unbuildable, but I think it limits the sorts of changes you can make.
Without, of variance or something.
Right.
Kerry, you're looking, your, your brow is furrowed.
In Minneapolis, the way it looks, it's just simply not permitted otherwise. Here, you could, you could have it a conditional use, something like that.
Or we could simply not permit it, like Minneapolis.
Commissioner Carr.
I am going back to the, what are our objectives here? For this section, what is it we're trying to accomplish? Are we trying to prevent these huge, huge retaining walls? And I think that's where the four-foot requirement came in. And now you're starting to get into landscaping issues and I don't know if that was our original objective or not.
It's a fair, go ahead.
I don't think it's a landscaping issue at all. This, this, I, I think part of the issue of these lots being raised up that our chair was just describing is largely what has been driving a number of the higher retaining walls that we're seeing in town. I, I think they're linked. I don't think it's one versus the other.
So the nightmare scenario was the one we saw where somebody comes out the side door and there's a 10-foot retaining wall right in their face?
And maybe the committee that took public hearing in addition to ours would like to comment on what, what you heard about this or if, if my perception is accurate.
Who did hear about retaining, who did hear about retaining walls? I guess I'd have to look back and see exactly on that. And I, people talk about retaining walls, but I don't know if, there was probably in that case, but it wasn't explicit, so I, you know, I, I don't know where else you'd have a retaining wall that, if it wasn't doing this, right?
To me, they're, those are linked issues, but...
I, I, yeah, and I think it, it touches on a couple of things. One, it touches on the whole, people concerned about, you know, houses that are built at a higher, a perceived higher elevation and things like that. So it has something to do with the, I'm trying to think of the word I'm looking for. Something to do with the grade changes and things like that, that, that they are artificially changing, like you said, flattening out an area. That was where we heard more, I think, about retaining walls was more, we didn't hear as much, you know, at least in the public stuff, about tall retaining walls. But, but the effect of it, as Nancy pointed out, was a concern. And also, I mean, when you get a tall retaining wall or a big change in grade, I would hope, you know, that can really affect, I'm glad we're having the engineering staff look at that stuff because that can really affect the adjacent properties as well, both from a drainage and a safety standpoint.
Commissioner Grable.
Two things, you might, you might address it by the definition of a retaining wall, where a retaining wall is one or a series of walls designed to allow a grade of a lot to be raised or something like that. Where you say, you know, all retaining walls, retaining walls singularly, singly or in a combination in excess of four feet require building permit. But I would still like to see if it's over four feet, that it's got to be a variance and it's got to come here for us to take a look at. Because you could have a building permit issued for a 20-foot retaining wall under this language.
Commissioner Carr.
I mean, I agree with the concept of avoiding these high, high retaining walls. I mean, I think that was the original concept behind this change, but, and again, I ask a question... I think that was the original concept behind this change, but, and again, I ask a question. Let's say you had a home that was either a new home or someone has a current home and they want to do some changing of their property, maybe moving a driveway in, on their current property, that requires them to cut into some dirt. So if that were the interior of a property and the wall was over four feet tall, you'd say they'd have to go for a variance? Even though it was, let's say, in the middle of their property, the retaining wall? I just throw that out as an example I'm thinking of.
I'm thinking, if I, if I applied the Minneapolis standard, which is sort of what I was saying we might want to think about, it would be precluded.
Well, I am less, I am less distressed, we talked about this, I think, back at the beginning of this retaining wall discussion, I'm less distressed by a retain, you know, it's kind of like the fence issue, a retaining wall that you are on the lower side of. So if you cut into a hill to create more flat spot, it's not the, it's not your neighbor who's looking at the face of the retaining wall, it's you looking at the face of the, so I don't have a concern about that. If it's engineered properly, if it's more than four feet, I want to make sure in the building permit that it's not going to cave in, that there's a safety code issue. It's, I think the reason we started this was, it was when somebody wants to build up their lot and therefore create the bad side of the retaining wall to their neighbor.
And that's in the Minneapolis, in the Minneapolis one, you know, it says, "For purposes of this determination, backfill should not be allowed behind any fence or wall that not otherwise be permitted." So I think that's what this is intended to address as well.
Well, but I think to Commissioner Carr's point, if you have a...
She said cut out, though. She didn't say raise up.
No, but, but you're changing the natural contour, so if you've got a, if you've got a lot that's built into a hillside and you're trying to create a little more usable space in the backyard, and you're going to kind of cut into that hillside and create a retaining wall to create more flat spot, it's not, I don't, you know, assuming it's engineered properly and it's not causing damage, you know, it's not violating any environmental regulations, why wouldn't you be able to do that? That doesn't, I don't think that harms either neighbor, but you are changing the natural terrain.
It would not fit with this.
Right, correct.
Change the language.
Right.
Is there an interior, exterior designation somehow there? Interior facing, exterior facing, would that?
Well, if we, if we just stick with the, you know, requiring a setback after four feet, at, at least you're not going to be, um...
Right to the property line.
Right to the property line. The problem is you could have a 10-foot retaining wall just three feet from the...
You haven't addressed the issue, you should start that discussion.
Yeah, because it's just a little further away. It's three feet away instead of right on the property line. But, you know, Commissioner Grable's suggestion about a variance for every one, I think in West Edina, there's some properties where there'd be a lot of retaining walls that are taller than four feet that we'd have to deal with.
I do like Commissioner Grable's suggestion of defining a retaining wall as the cumulative height change over a distance versus, you know, maybe you say within X number of feet, you know, additional retaining walls still count as the first one. So it's like within the first 30 feet by, or something that, that would all add up. But again, you know, you could have a series of retaining walls just stabilizing an existing grade, too, so.
Commissioner Carr.
You know, after all that discussion, though, I'm still satisfied with the proposed language, though. I think that accomplishes our objective of having these huge, tall retaining walls, and yet, and there has to be a three-foot setback, but it still gives people some flexibility to do something in their, on their property that might not impact the neighbors. I don't know. The wording is fine. I, I'm fine with the actual wording.
What does, yeah, and how does this affect, say, you know, a 15-foot retaining wall that's three feet from the property line of the adjacent neighbor, so that they could flatten it out at the top? I mean, we are addressing the complaints that have, we have heard about, or the concerns of residents that we have heard.
Just, just a comment, I'm not sure how you legislate all conditions here.
Yeah, that's what I'm hearing.
That's why you do the variance process.
We can't address all conditions, but on the other hand, if we have some goals with our ordinances that set some standards, it does at least trigger further inspection by the engineering department and/or require a variance to go beyond it. We can set goals and standards and try to have our ordinances complement that as too, so.
Chair.
Commissioner Carpenter.
I'm going to go back to what Commissioner Grable was talking about, which I think is, in retrospect, an elegant solution to a problem that is, I think, otherwise unsolvable with too many variations that we're trying to fix. Well, it's, you know, the idea is, I think, in principle, that they can't do it, they go for a variance, and, you know, they'll either get it or they won't, depending upon whether it's justified or not, and that will set the standard for that particular property. And I don't know that we have to solve virtually every one of these things in one sitting. If it turns out over the span of time, you know, next several months or years, that, that there's something we can do to enhance it, we can always step in and mend the ordinance further. But I think this is a fine way to, to deal with it, at least in the short term and maybe in the long term.
So are you suggesting that the last sentence, which is retaining walls taller than four feet require a building permit, must meet a three-foot setback, be changed to no retaining walls may be built that are greater than four feet, period?
Um, possibly, possibly.
And then that, and if it's taller than four feet, you have to ask for a variance?
They'd have to ask for a variance.
What, why is four feet the magic?
Well, I don't know. And then it, that raises the issue of some of the topography of some of the homes and...
Well, the four foot, if I'm not mistaken, is a building permit standard, isn't it? Is that, that's how we get the four foot, right?
Right, anything over four feet needs to be engineered and a building permit's required.
Right. So what if we, what if kind of the, the, what if we were to require not a variance, but a conditional use permit for any, any retaining wall over four feet that is facilitating the raising of the grade? So that if you're lowering...
It seems overly elegant to me, Mr. Chair.
If, if that can be possible.
I really don't want...
Wow, I've never been accused of that before.
I really don't want to muddy things up with conditional use permits. I mean, to me, I like...
Well, now, were you, which side were you on in the variance?
I, I don't like using, I don't like using variances needlessly either.
All right, you don't want to muddy it with a variance either. At least you're consistent on that.
Consistently and consistently.
I just heard from down here, variances. I thought you were on the variance.
No, I wasn't on that one. No, 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 no. I like, I mean, I like...
So you don't want to have, you don't want to have a variance or a conditional use permit?
No, I want us to use variances judiciously, let's put it that way. If we can write something that's broad enough to include most situations, so that, in other words, maybe we do look at how we define retaining walls, so it takes into account, you know, closely spaced multiple levels of three-foot walls. I, I like that idea that came from Commissioner Grable. I don't like conditional use permits because I think it's, it's kind of, it, it's already presumed it's allowed unless we find something wrong with it, you know, up to a certain standard. So it becomes kind of us trying to justify a negative rather than a positive.
Commissioner Platter.
I would agree with Commissioner Carr and I believe Commissioner Carpenter, where the language, as it's written today, I would agree with, and I think, you know, we have the opportunity to adjust in the future as needed. I think that's what you said, yeah.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question of direct...
Please.
Carrie, did you say that retaining walls taller than four feet require a building permit?
Yes.
Why do we have to put it in our ordinance?
Well, it...
Why would we put it in an ordinance if it's already required by?
We wouldn't have to.
Code. So what we're really trying to say here is that retaining walls taller than four feet must meet a three-foot setback. And that's beginning to deal not with the mechanics of the wall, but with the aesthetics of the wall, but it only deals with part of the aesthetics. I think what I'd like to get away from is kind of, I'd like to, if it, if it tall, if a wall taller than four feet already requires a building permit and there's standards in there, I'd not like to deal with it here. I'd like to try and wrestle with the issue of the aesthetics, which I think is what we're really concerned about. And whether it's singular or multiple, it's a dramatic change to the topography of the lot, and that's what I think the issue is here. Not how you make the wall stand up, that's already dealt with somewhere else.
So that's in the universal building code now, the four-foot thing? Okay, that wasn't clear in our previous meetings, that's why, that's interesting. I thought that was something we were imposing.
Okay, so that's fine. So it's a three-foot setback. So then, Commissioner Schroder, how do we, I mean, is it Commissioner Shear's point about the natural grade? I mean, when do we, or is it the raising, if they're facilitating a raising of grade? I think that's the place where the abuse is. I'm not looking to find the lots that, that totally drop off a cliff on the back and need a retaining wall to help with that. I'm, I'm looking to deal with these tight spaces that we've heard about.
What, what I think we've been discussing, and when we get past the issue of the mechanics of the wall and start dealing with the aesthetics, we're dealing with maintaining neighborhood character. If we can get there, then we should be deciding the tool we use to best maintain neighborhood character, whether that's a variance or a conditional use process, or structuring it in ordinance. I think that, I think in the ordinance is probably difficult, but I think the, the method we have for review that gives us the best method of maintaining neighborhood character becomes the important criteria.
And so is the, is the character changing when the natural grade changes? So we could use the natural grade, and then if a retaining wall is going to change the natural grade, then we require either a conditional use permit or a variance?
Yes.
And so I would, you know, want to have it very clear then that natural grade is related to whether or not extra fill is required, because, like the Minneapolis one, I thought that was a good definition or clarification of that.
Just to put it out there, what we hear from the builders is that a lot of these retaining walls in the side yards are being built in order to meet our side yard setback requirement with that stepping in, because the measurement is taken from proposed grade in the side yard, and by us doing away with that, with that requirement now to step in the second story, builders are telling us that they won't need to build retaining walls in the side yard like they have been. Just to put that out there. That doesn't take care of the issue of the, the extremely large retaining walls that we're seeing right on lot lines, but kind of the smaller ones that we're seeing, we won't see as much of.
Commissioner Shear.
I guess my response to that would be, after thinking of things that we've attempted to deal with in code over the years, we'll know in several years, regardless of how we word this, whether that's reality, whether they appear for variances, or if we held the language as it is, whether we continue to see raised walls even after we've changed other portions of the code. But we won't know that now, and they're simply stating it isn't, I, I hate, hate to sound jaded, but it isn't proof to me that it will be, based on my experience on the planning commission.
And I don't think it will address those rare cases where you end up with this, all of a sudden, you know, 20-foot retaining wall three feet from a lot line. You know, I, I mean, I'd hate to see that happen, and then there's, there's nothing in, you know, there's no recourse, there's nothing in the code that would prevent that either. And we have seen it happen.
Drilling to this point about natural grade, and maybe Wayne or Ross, you can help with this, so if we use language like, like Minneapolis has about retaining walls where natural grade is retained, I mean, it seems to me we're, we're calling for a staff judgment about whether a particular planned retaining wall is going to retain the natural grade or not.
And that's natural.
Well, that's what I was going to ask, is there you...
It's probably in the Minneapolis plan. Natural grade is determined by reference to a survey or other information as determined by the zoning administrator.
So the language that you identify, Commissioner Shear, in the background, it says, "There's been an increase in the number of retaining walls proposed and required yards where the proposed natural grade would be altered on the interior side of the wall. The intent is to raise the level of grade by adding fill and permanently alter the topography." That's a situation we're wrestling with, too, isn't it?
Yeah. It's sort of interesting that they state the rationale upfront, that, that's an interesting style. May be helpful to people in understanding why you're writing code.
Yeah, well, this is an announcement, it looks like an administrative, this is a, okay, great, there's, there you go, grade comma natural.
There it is. It's the one I just read.
All right. Somebody help me bring this to closure.
Mr. Chair?
Please.
I would actually like to see staff look at some of the methods we could use particularly related to your suggestion of a conditional use process, conditional use permit to do this, because we can frame the criteria that we can use to judge that better than we can in a variance. And it's similar to how we have the criteria for how we grant a conditional use for exceeding a one-foot cha, grade, one-foot change in the first floor elevation of a house. So we're dealing with existing and proposed conditions, we're dealing with, and I think one of those conditions is that it can't detrimentally impact the aesthetics or the character of the neighborhood. So we could frame conditions where this would be acceptable, and they would bring those back to us.
So in addition to the general conditional use permit criteria, we would add these other specific ones that are specific to retaining wall CUPs?
Depending on what the threshold is for when a conditional use permit is brought forward, this might be a staffing issue, because we're thinking if it's anything over four feet, you're going to have these on every agenda. And the, and these all go to the city council as well, so.
And then over four feet, bingo?
Yes.
And with the purpose to raise elevation?
But, but wouldn't it be defined to the point of, like the Minneapolis one, we're only look, I think, we're only looking at the conditions where it's actually raising it to the adjacent property in a way, right? So is that the definition?
Right, we don't have to be concerned anymore about the four feet, that's handled by the building code.
Right.
We're talking about change in neighborhood character.
Right, and natural grade.
Right, so we get back to the notion of natural grade or existing grade or some, some determination like that.
So it's not, the four feet is...
Right.
Yeah.
And, and then it does become a staff interpretation, as the Minneapolis code does, about whether it actually moves forward through the process of conditional use or whatever method we use.
You'll know it when you see it, right?
This is going to take some study on our part. I'm not sure if it's going to be, if we can turn something like this around in a couple of weeks.
Well, that's what I'm suggesting, let's not jump into it, let's make sure we do it correctly.
So would, I mean, should we move forward with the language we have and then double back for further recommendations on this, or how, what do?
I think, you know, if we're handing the city council, I mean, we don't have to, to formally act with a vote unless, I mean, I credit you for wanting to kind of tally where our mood is on these things, but I think this, since, as long as our concerns and this discussion is clearly reflected in, in, you know, in the record, that's going to be helpful for them to determine how far they want to go with this as well.
So do we move forward with this language, or don't we? So do we move forward with this language, or don't we? Commissioner?
I was just going to say, I think that the first two sentences make sense to have those. Retaining walls must be shown on a grading plan. As part of a building permit application, plans must demonstrate materials to be used for the retaining wall construction. I haven't heard any comments about that section. The controversial part has to do with four feet and the three-foot setback, and maybe that's the one that we should postpone making a decision on until we've had more information.
Well, we could, could just delete the words require a building permit and.
I would agree with that.
The final sentence says retaining walls taller than four feet must meet a three-foot setback. We could move that language forward.
That's true, yeah.
And then we could, you know, address this issue. We seem to be, we seem to be feeling like this isn't quite enough, it's a step, but it's not quite enough. But we can move this along with what we have now and then double back and make further recommendations on this retaining wall issue. Commissioner Scher.
I guess I'm trying to understand the process. We would move this ahead to the council without resolving that issue?
Yes.
That doesn't feel right to me.
Well, so here's my, here's my dilemma. I think it's very important that we act on this stuff tonight, and that we move this stuff forward. I mean, we've been at it seven months, I think we've really plumbed this, I think we have to move something forward. And if we can't get the whole job done, my recommendation would be we move, we move the portion of the job that we can get done forward. So we could either just not do anything with that retaining wall language and leave it the same. We could do the half a lump solution, which is to install the three-foot setback for retaining walls taller than four feet. Or we can continue to wrestle with what we're going to do, which it sounds like we've all agreed we can't quite solve the bigger issue of whether we need a conditional use permit and how we, how we deal with these kind of aesthetic changes to the natural terrain.
I appreciate wanting to move everything to, onto them, it just feels as though what we're moving on on this topic isn't addressing the issue we set out to address. And that concerns me, but.
Part of that came up tonight, though, I thought, I mean.
I mean, we've, it's been on our discussion before, but.
Yeah, we've been, we've been.
I mean, I'm, I'm for forwarding things along to get, and if we need to circle back, it sounds like we're going to have to, and who knows what the council's going to come back with anyway? I mean, they could have a whole host of other items as well.
I would like to make clear to them what we're, that we're still considering action on this one, and we're studying the Minneapolis plan and some others.
Fair enough.
Because particularly, we're interested in these lots where retaining walls are being used to raise and flatten an entire lot that is not at all in the topography of the surrounding homes.
Okay, so can I add, I think that's a good, you know, so that they know, we don't think this is the final solution, but it's one step forward.
I'm okay with that.
Can I ask one other question before we leave this item? There was a discussion at our last meeting about particularly tall retaining walls and safety issues, whether there's guardrails or the like, you know, people who are standing on the edge and can fall over. I don't know, Wayne, if you have any knowledge base on that as to whether that's a, you know, is there a building code issue there, is there some kind of? And did staff think, you know, did you do any noodling on that in the time we had in between, or come to any conclusions?
Yeah, we checked with some of those other cities and didn't find anyone that required a rail on, on top of them.
I know when we, when we do road rate projects, we put in retaining walls and anything over like 32 to 48 inches, that we actually will put something up there, it won't be a child safety type railing, but it might be a split rail or something that will blend into that property that, adjacent to what we're putting that retaining wall in, just for the fact that we don't want somebody walking off and, you know, obviously falling, falling off that retaining wall.
Yeah, because I know it was raised in the public comments and I'm not sure how we can address it. All right, what else do we have on this item number one? Number one.
The other one was.
Egress window and site access.
Just quickly, on the screen here, was the egress window issue. We're going to require a five-foot setback on one side and exempt the other side, so that language has been added. And then you had asked for a definition of the maintenance access along the side, so we've done that. That's the language there.
Any comments on that language or on the window egress language? Commissioner Carr?
I just have a question. Explain to me the egress window, what the setbacks are on either side, I wasn't clear on that.
A five-foot setback is required on one side, and on the other side, there is no setback, so it could encroach into the required setback.
So the conversation that we had at the last meeting was, we, we had a, what we were going to do was remove, we're going to remove the exemption for egress window wells on the side yards. And then the notion was that it's impeding the ability in some situations to get around to the back.
Right.
And so folks thought that really we didn't need to do that on both sides. There was some discussion about safety along with that, but ultimately, I think people felt like one side was good enough.
But, so, does that mean that the egress window could go up to the lot line? On one side?
What's the exception, is it three feet, or is it just not, it's not counted as an encroachment at all? Okay, so it could theoretically go right to the lot on one side.
In my, I wasn't at the meeting last time when this issue was discussed maybe in more detail, but that seems to be a safety issue, unless there's some requirements that some bars or some kind of barrier be put, well, you can't do that on the egress window either, you can't put barriers there. So you have an open, open hole that someone in the next door lot can fall into, I'm thinking of children in particular.
Which is true in the front and the back, but.
Safety bars on egress windows, they lift up, they're impeded for lifting up. I mean, but, so that is a possibility, but I like the idea of allowing it maybe to encroach, but not be any closer than, so it's kind of like a three-foot minimum setback for, for egress windows, maybe, you know, if anything. So it can't go right up to the lot line, because then somebody else wants to do something to their property next to the lot line, then it's, it just seems a little snug, but I do like it to be able to get closer than five feet.
Can I offer this? Without getting an easement for your neighbor, you couldn't actually construct it up to the property line, because you'd be impacting your construction to an extent over the property line, which you wouldn't be allowed to do without gaining a temporary easement from your neighbor's property. So the neighbor will be protected just by the virtue of how you, how you would end up having to construct this improvement.
All right. So, when you say that, are you talking about just that we're just measuring the opening and not the whole structure itself, or?
To construct it, you'd have to stand on the neighbor's property.
Well, okay, for the process of building, and yet currently builders are fudging over on retaining walls like that all the time. But yeah, I, I don't know, I like digging into the neighbor's property, I mean, we get in these tight lots, it's nice to have some breathing room, but, but I, otherwise, I'm in total agreement with this, and I thought it was an interesting comment from one of our residents, though, concerned about allowing the egress window to go up to the lot line if the neighbor's driveway runs along that area. Then, then it's, maybe that's more of a safety issue, I'm not sure.
And then in addition to safety issues, I mean, what if you're cut, I mean, you're cutting the grass along there, I guess, are you going, the grass clippings are going to be flying into that egress spot, maybe that's not going to cause an issue, or gravel falls into it? I mean, it just doesn't seem right to be able to have a hole right next to the lot line. How deep are some of these egress windows, we're talking, what, five feet deep? I'm not sure if there's a, there's probably a regulation on how, what the height of an egress window has to be, but.
They're all over town already now, right next to the lot lines.
Some of this depends, some of this depends on the property owner for crying out loud. If they're going to, if they're going to do that, they're going to suffer the consequences of the grass clippings going into their egress, egress window. The way the ordinance was written that we looked at last week, there was no egress window along the side of any house. And that did not make sense to me, and apparently to others, because it's been changed, so. And I think that's the point, we do want to allow egress windows, and I think, you know.
All right, other, any other comment on that topic? All right, so we've reached the end of this first item, and lest we, lest we not remember our discussion, what I'd like to do is vote on these as we move along. So we have made one slight change to the language on the retaining walls, where we deleted the language require a building permit and, so that now the last sentence reads retaining walls taller than four feet must meet a three-foot setback. Commissioner Scher.
Not to be repetitive, but we're going to provide language to the council telling them what our continuing concerns are about some of the elements of this.
I'm sensing the formation of a motion.
Oh.
On your behalf. I feel it coming on.
Oh, well, aren't you? Then I guess I, I would move that we, with the change that we made in the retaining wall section, that we, and the comments to the council about our concerns about how we mitigate the flattening of topography to create certain types of unusual lots and neighborhoods, that notwithstanding that we send to the council, as written here with the one modification, the subsection seven on drainage retaining walls and site access amendments and changes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? All right, very good. That's one. We're steaming along now. Building lot coverage, Carrie.
This is one you did not make any recommendations for change at the last meeting, so it is essentially keeping the ordinance as it exists today. Any lot that's 9,000 square feet or less in size, there's a 30% lot coverage with a cap at 2,250. And anything larger than 9,000 square feet, there's a 30%, 25%, excuse me, maximum coverage requirement. And then just for the sake of making the ordinance easier to navigate, we've included what constitutes building coverage, we've just shifted that from another section of the code. So that's it for this, this topic.
All right, so this is the 30% lot coverage for under 9,000 square feet and 25% for others. Commissioner Scher.
I'm looking at section three, building coverage shall include all principal or accessory buildings, including but not limited to, and we have a long laundry list, and we get to F, accessory recreational facilities constructed above grade such as paddle tennis courts. And it strikes me that, I don't know how many paddle tennis courts we have constructed around town, but there's a growing trend to have sport courts. And I wondered what we think about that, or whether we would like to substitute the words sport courts for paddle tennis courts.
Why don't we just leave it as any accessory recreational facility?
Any accessory recreational facility constructed above grade, period, would do the same thing. Don't say paddle tennis courts.
Yeah, that's just existing language in the code, and we could sure strike that.
Do we have a lot of shuffleboard courts? I know we do have a lot of elderly people.
Well, but, so, Carrie, the, so under, well, F says that accessory recreational facilities constructed above grade such as paddle tennis courts are not included. Oh, no, it does include them, so building coverage does include, why then do we have the next? Oh, but then it says. Oh, I see, we don't, we don't need the second half of C, of the, of the second C, because it just says that. Somebody was mad at paddle tennis courts. Is that?
So if you put a period after another reading, if you struck the second half of C below, would that accomplish our objective?
I think you still need F, because.
I do.
There you're talking about accessory recreational facilities where you might have them enclosed by solid walls. Whereas the exclusions are recreational facilities that are not enclosed by solid walls, such as outdoor swimming pools, tennis courts, shuffleboard courts. And then, you're right, they've added the, they, but facilities which are constructed above grade such as paddle tennis courts shall be included. That's kind of repetitive of what's already been included in the very beginning, it's already said.
Chris, help us. We've fallen into the looking glass.
Well, we have very few paddle tennis courts, it's a, it's a raised platform that usually has fencing around it, lights. We have them at our, our country clubs, they play games in the winter time on them. Those would count, because they're raised, they're almost like a deck. A regular tennis court, the pool decking around a pool, a sport court, those are not included in lot coverage.
I guess that causes me to raise the question to all of you, a sport court that has large walls around it and is now encompassing a lot of visual space, a, or any other kind of facility that, that is built that way. Should that be included? Or, or large netting, you know, from tall poles.
Well, as the owner of one.
Oh, okay.
It doesn't have any walls around it.
No, you don't have fencing, but that's not.
So it's just a concrete slab with a, a plastic surface over the top of it.
Okay, and does it have any walls around it, any fencing, nothing?
No.
Okay. There are some in my neighborhood that look different than that.
I'm sure that you could have fencing around, you could have netting around them. They just don't have to. So it's, from a staff perspective, is it?
So should we just eliminate F and keep C?
Well, is the difference here about whether it's fenced, is that once it's fenced, or does it have to be above grade and fenced in order to be?
Well, if it's above grade, it's definitely counted, and if it's fenced and above grade, it would be counted. If it's at grade, if it's a tennis court, or if it's a, a sport court, it is not included. And you can have a fence right up against the tennis court or the sport court, or it could be, your entire backyard is fenced, I mean, that's.
Right.
A fence can be anywhere, we don't look at fences separately.
Right.
Whether they're adjacent or on the lot lines.
So have the C, the proud of road, that's on with your app, right?
I think the paddle tennis court.
Facilities which are constructed above grade, which is really saying what F is, right?
I think that paddle tennis court kind of confuses things, because it's, nobody, I don't know what a paddle tennis court looks like, so then I'm starting to think about tennis courts and everything, so I like the above grade thing.
Commissioner Schroeder?
I think that's actually the point, is it's what it looks like, so we are trying to count in building coverage all those things that people can see that are part of the visual experience of the neighborhood, and those things that are, with the exception of, where it's the parking structures, parking lots and parking ramps. I think we're trying to get at those things that actually impede upon the visual character of the neighborhood in a negative way. So I don't know, I don't know if that helps at all, but again, it's getting back to neighborhood aesthetics.
The, the language of the ordinance, which has not been changed, apparently hasn't created a problem, if you start taking stuff out and monkeying around with the language, you might cause a problem that you don't know you're going to cause, so. There's no harm in leaving the language the way it is, so why change it?
Because we're reviewing the language and we're cleaning things up right now, and there's stuff that has to be interpreted by the staff and maybe would be interpreted differently by the staff going forward.
And the staff apparently, the staff apparently has interpreted this language quite fine the way it is. And you start monkeying around with language, you don't know what you're causing when you don't need to change the language.
Others say he's taking out something that's archaic.
Drafting ordinances by committee is a pain in the neck and dangerous, because somebody wants to take a word out, and you don't know what taking that word out is really going to do. This language has not been a problem in the past, so why change it now?
All right, I hear a motion coming on.
I approve, I move the approval.
Is there a second? All right. All right, further discussion?
So you're talking about leaving in the paddle tennis courts?
Yes.
Twice.
That's the motion.
Okay, you want to, so you want to leave it just the way it is, right now?
That's the motion.
Okay. Discussion, then. I guess my concern is, what we're doing here is we're looking at ordinances by committee. We are trying to go back and clean up ordinances that either the staff, or that we, or that the public find somewhat confusing. Not only is it for staff to interpret, it's also for, for residents to be able to read our code and have some certainty about what's allowed and what's not allowed. So that's my argument for, for what other people had previously discussed about-
So you will vote against the motion?
I would vote against it going forward as it's written. I think it's a good idea that somebody else had to take out the references to paddle tennis courts, and just the references to paddle tennis courts.
Okay.
Because then it can still be cleanly interpreted. To me, it's confusing, because I think I don't-
So that will be the basis for your vote against it?
Who requested that it be taken out?
Somebody down there.
I said it seems like an arcane term, and I asked that we look at sport courts.
Is there, is other discussion on the motion? Commissioner Carr.
I, I agree with you. I mean, the language appears to be fine, but in reading through it, I'm sorry, but C, in the second portion of it, is duplicative, but it's already stated in F.
So the last clause of section C-
I just think it's sloppy drafting.
Are you proposing to the motioner a, an amendment to his motion to delete the second half of, the second item C?
Yes.
How does the motioner feel about that amendment?
You know, it's still saying, don't change it.
My motion was to approve this language, because I don't think the language needs to be changed.
So the motioner rejects the amendment, so is there further discussion on the motion? Commissioner Shear.
I, I like Commissioner Carr's suggestion.
All right, any further discussion on the motion?
I can agree with that, I should also.
Does that cause the motioner to reconsider his motion?
As a matter of comity, or maybe comedy-
Or comedy.
I will accept the change.
All right, so the, and is that okay with the seconder? Since the seconder just said he was okay with the motion, I'm going to assume it is. All right. So, we have an amended motion. We finally have driven away the last of the audience. We have, but there's many people watching this on TV, and imagine how they're feeling about it right now. All right, so the second half of the second item C will be deleted after the word "shuffleboard courts." We will insert a period. That is the motion. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, very good. Item three.
What, technically, Carrie and subsection six, building coverage, you have one, two, and two again, and then three? On page three. I don't think we need to vote on that, but I was just pointing it out.
Yep. There'll be no vote on that. We'll leave the numbering to staff. Thank you for flagging that. All right, item three, Carrie. Side yard setback, including the second-story setback requirement.
The one change here, I believe was suggested by our last audience member that just left.
Finally wore her out.
Yeah, this was the elimination of an attached garage having a five-foot setback. And the language on the screen is how the existing ordinance reads. In addition to attached garages, we included tool sheds, greenhouses, and garden houses. So since the, the consensus of the planning commission was to strike that, we're just going to strike that entire provision. So anything that's attached to a house, it's considered a dwelling, and is required to meet all the side yard setbacks.
So a detached garage will still have a three-foot setback or whatever it is?
Correct.
Okay. Is there discussion on this item? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign? All right. I don't know if we got nine ayes, but we'll count them as nine.
So that includes-
All right, item four.
That includes all the other side yard setback requirements that we've talked about in the past.
Yep. So the language as it was in front of us this evening. Very good. Now we're screaming along. Item four, building height.
Okay, building height. This next one, again, no changes were recommended by the planning commission at the, the last go-around. So what the ordinance before you reduces the total height from 35 to 30 feet for lots that are 75 feet in width or less. And anything above 75 feet would remain the same. That's the, that's the only change.
And you said, in the memo, it says pages one and six. I see where it is in one, I'm not seeing where it is in six. Oh, it's seven, actually. It's dribbled over to seven now, okay. All right, is there more discussion on this item? We didn't make any changes to this. Commissioner Platter? Motion to approve, is there a second? Discussion, Commissioner Forrest.
Just a question. So somewhere else, it's in the code, then, it's very clearly defined, when you're measuring to ridge height, where are you starting that measurement from?
From existing, or, yeah, from existing grade.
From the average grade on the front of the structure.
Existing grade.
Existing grade.
Not where it's going to be, where it is right now.
Okay. All right.
Just like it is today.
Okay. Without hearing any further discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign? All right. Item number five, side ball articulation.
Essentially no changes from the last discussion, although I don't know that we got a consensus whether this be in or out. We had some wording changing. I think it was the projecting or recessed. Couple of just minor word changes there, but-
I'm, I'm still, I would love to see length, width, height put in there somewhere, because I still don't know if, what that 10-foot refers to. Is that the height of it, or the width of it? When you go one foot, 10-foot.
So where exactly are you talking about? On page 12, what, what language?
The first paragraph.
The first paragraph?
I see 30.
Is it?
At least one foot.
One foot by 10-foot offset?
Offset.
I'd like to, you know, I'd like to see it.
So what language are you proposing we change?
Anything they want to use that indicates that the one foot refers to the depth, and what, I don't, what is, what does the 10-foot refer to? Height or width?
We could say a 10-foot offset of the wall plane.
Whatever works.
It's the length of it.
Is the 10-foot the length? Carrie?
Correct, it's the length. It's the length of the, it's the length of the articulation.
Well-
We're talking about length of the exterior sidewall.
The width.
Yeah.
The width of, the width of the articulation.
It's from front to back. Yeah, right, front to back?
It's not depth.
No, I know it's not depth, but I was, I was envisioning almost, you know, height, because in order to get the, the type of change in visual effect.
But that would be a setback. That would be an additional, no?
No, I'm talking about, putting a door in that's two feet, you know, one foot deeper in, and it's 10 feet long, no.
Depth, it is.
But, or 10-foot high, because the-
The height of the building, you know, the wall or something.
The other, but the other examples that are given are like a dormer window, which I really don't want to include as an exception, or as a-
The horizontal length.
Why don't we say one foot wide by 10-foot, or one foot deep by 10-foot wide offset?
Yeah, that's what, that's what it is, yeah.
Does that work? Carrie?
As long as they don't, somebody doesn't think, it has to be deep, meaning it has to go in rather than out, but, you know, I still think it works.
There is a limit to what we can describe.
They'll note that right away.
So what was yours suggesting, one foot deep by-
So I was suggesting that we change the language, say one foot-
Ten foot long.
-deep by 10-foot wide offset.
And we would still say projecting or recessed?
Yes.
Correct.
So you'd just insert deep and wide, which is two words we would add.
Gives you the size, then, that you're dealing with.
That's right, yeah. It clarifies it.
That helps me, thank you.
All right, further discussion?
I, could we discuss the, the items below?
Go ahead.
My architecture, which was whacking.
For me, roof dormers doesn't, I, I would not like to see that one included, because I'm envisioning a lot of these homes where they have long additions on the back, and it could be a two-story, long, blank, single-plane wall, and if you put a couple of roof dormers on top, to me, that doesn't visually change the impact on what the neighbors are looking out their windows at.
So you don't think roof dormers should qualify?
Right.
It's a combination of two of those architectural elements.
Right, but I don't think roof dormers are, are achieving the visual effect necessarily, especially on a, a two-story wall. That's all.
I would disagree.
Right, I mean, you're still looking at, at a, you know, a train car that goes back with minimal change in, in visual effect, especially, we've seen some that have like two windows on a big, long wall, and you put a couple little roof dormers up on the top, I think it, it, to me, it just isn't significant enough, so that would be my preference, that's all.
I, I think that, that we've, there's a lot of suggestions here for ways to make that extension appear not so monotonous. I don't, so what we're doing is basically saying any of these can be combined, any two can be combined, and I don't know if I want to be that restrictive. I'd like to give the developers some leeway in designing homes, and to take out the dormers is just one less way that they can make an interesting house, appear less monotonous. So, but-
Is there, is there, Commissioner Forrest, is there any support for taking the dormers out?
For putting them, this is all mine.
I know, but this is the language we have. You're suggesting we take the dormers out, I'm just trying to find out if it's worth pursuing.
I, I think Commissioner Forrest is right, but-
I'd be okay with removing them. I don't think they're compelling, if you don't, you know, if you put two dormers up on the roof, I would say that. I just visually, it's not as compelling as some articulating, or, you know, change in the side of the property.
Because you could have a two-story home that would then have a flat side, but just two or three dormers high up, and I don't know that that would accomplish what we were talking about.
We'd have to have one other thing. You'd have to have one other thing from the list.
Well, it, it could be pretty minimal.
Okay, so, I hear three people that are-
So I, I guess I, to answer your question, I'd be okay with removing that.
Good, so, are there any other discussion items other than the removal of the dormers on this issue? Commissioner Shear.
I'm just curious, the, I like the idea of bay or box windows, but why do we limit them to cantilevered rather than supported on a foundation?
Carrie, Chris, any, is it just what the language came from?
This language was just taken from-
Another-
Elmo Heights as an example of what we could do.
I mean, I have, I have a bay window in my living room that is on the foundation, it goes all the way down into the basement level, and it gives you just as much articulation out as if it were cantilevered, and actually, from a maintenance standpoint, it's easier to maintain. So, assuming it could meet-
So you'd be for-
Side yard setbacks, I would just say projecting bay or box windows.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with that.
Other items? All right, so I hear some appetite for, for limiting number two to just projecting bay or box windows, and for eliminating number seven roof dormers, so I'd entertain a motion to that effect.
Second.
And there is a second. Is there further discussion on that? I hear one for keeping the dormers.
I would prefer them.
Two for keeping the dormers. All right. Further, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, same sign? All right. That item has passed, so now we're down to front-facing garage. Getting to the good stuff. Carrie.
Front-facing-
Page 11 in your hymnal.
Garage, the only change was adding language about the garage may not extend beyond the front building line by more than, and we had, I, we're suggesting five feet, I think there was some discussion about 10 feet before. So I guess we throw that out for, for discussion on what your preference is there.
Pages 11 and 12, bottom of 11, top of 12. Now, there was also a, one of the comments that we received was that we suggested that we amend the, the language describing the garage door to, to being the garage facade, so it would take into account not just the door itself, but the, the, the portion of the building that's coming out, where the garage door is.
I thought that's what we really meant, or at least that's what I meant when that was in there, so. I would like to see that as well.
So that would, that would call for us to change in item one garage door to garage facade, and I assume in item two we'd want to say garage facade as well?
And then, I, I would think we would strike the height reference and just keep the width. Would that be, does that make sense to others?
Yeah.
No need for the height limit, or is it-
I would just strike the height.
You could have a gable end facing out that would have living space above that would be precluded by this, if it's public garage.
Gotcha. Well, the only thing I would say, though, is that, would you still have the garage door limited to nine feet in height? I get what you're saying about that, but would you physically, you know, see-
Do we care how tall a garage door is?
I'm just asking the question, I don't, are you going to have a lot more, more than that? I don't, I don't know.
Commissioner Grable?
Well, I, there's a difference between a garage and a garage door. And you got to have a certain minimum width for a garage door, and if you've got a minimum width for the garage door, the garage, the garage has to be wider than that.
So if we're going to change it to garage facade, we need to widen the number, or do we just leave it at the 60%?
You want the, you want the garage, you want the garage not to be more than 60% of the width of the house, and then, uh-
So just take out the 24 feet? The garage facade shall be no more than 60, shall not exceed 60% of the width of the principal structure?
Yeah, wouldn't that do it? Then you just have the 60% and then, yeah, that would cover it, right?
Does that work? Commissioner Forrest.
I, I'm thinking a house on a 40-foot lot, you've got 30 feet of building width max, so you've got the maximum of a 20-foot, feet total facade for a garage on a 40-foot lot, which is really getting snug when you're thinking about the depth of walls and everything else. Isn't generally, isn't 20 feet around number as far as kind of the lower end of a double garage in width?
Low.
Very low? Okay. So that's, that's my concern, how it would impact houses, building on a, a house on a 40-foot lot, which is one that is fairly, fairly likely to have a front-facing attached garage, just because of the minimal lot area to begin with.
Maximum width on a 40-foot lot would be 18 feet.
For the garage?
For the garage.
Thank you, I was just going to try and figure that out.
You'd need 60%.
For the garage, the whole garage facade, not even the garage.
Right.
So you wouldn't be able to get a double garage under that.
Be your one-car garage.
Don't start that yet.
There aren't that many 40-foot lots, but there are more than a handful in town, so I don't know if we would want to put a, a specific exception for lots less than 50 feet, or-
I'd say if they, I'd say if they come in. How many are there?
I don't know, how many?
Do you have any ideas for them?
Three.
There's a lot in northeast Rochester, if you go over on east of France.
There's quite a few.
So do we want to say, shall be no more than the greater of 24 feet or 60%? No, but then you, yeah. So then, then everybody gets at least a 24-foot garage? No. Well, it's 60%, well, on that one, on the 40-foot lot, no, you're not going to have much else.
And does that, does that allow them then to do all garages, you know?
Commissioner Grable?
This is probably the, the biggest issue that there is in town right now, is the front-facing garages, and I'm afraid if we say the greater of 60% or 24 feet, that you're going to, I mean, why not limit it to 60%?
And then just field the variances on the really small lots?
Yeah, I'm...
Because it would be a collision between if we keep the two-car garage requirement?
Yeah.
Which is yet to be determined, but...
Yet to be determined.
Well, it just, all right.
Can I build a four-car garage on a 40-foot lot?
All right, you know.
I'm, I'm just concerned about the, the impression that we're giving to everybody who says this is a really crucial issue and then we're fudging on it.
Commissioner Carr?
I, I would agree with that, too. I think this is a significant issue, and the important aspect of this is the 60% of the width of the principal structure. That's the real key part of the ordinance, so that you don't have just garage space facing the street.
My, one problem with using the variance thing for this, though, is that many of these homes will have an alternative, and that is to do a detached two-car garage in the back, which means it's, it's more of a design issue than anything, but it's pretty much saying you cannot have an attached garage in, on a 40-foot lot, which I think is a little bit stringent, too. I think it's less efficient use of space.
This doesn't preclude it, the two cars preclude it.
Right, right. I mean, in total, it does.
What I'm getting at is that's another, that's another issue.
No. It's a two-in combination, which is what exists right now.
This is a separate thing, in my opinion, because we can deal with a two-car, one-car later on. How's that?
Because if we leave this the way it is, you are, pretty much what you're saying is, you're asking somebody to come in for a variance when they don't need a variance because it's a design issue, not a I can't build it on my lot issue, and that's, that's my concern. I think it's, we might change things as we move forward into the requirement for two-car garages, but then you're also saying, you know...
Right, well, it sounds to me like we're at, we're at the facade being no more than 60% of the width of the principal structure.
So slim that up to just read that, right?
Yeah.
And, and you could do a tandem garage.
Yes, I know, yeah.
Okay, so let's, let's leave it that way. I just wanted to raise about the second issue. I am not supportive of the requirement that we, that we limit where the garage, how far the garage can extend in front. I just think we're taking away too many. I think we've, we've dealt with the width of the facade and I, I, I'm not supportive of taking away the creativity and whatever kinds of, I can, I can envision scenarios where you could come further than five feet from the front and still, and still make it work fine, so.
I would tactfully disagree with that. Actually, I was hoping it'd be zero feet myself, so I was going the other way.
Commissioner Shear?
I spent some time in my neighborhood measuring garage extensions the other day.
Good for you.
Oh, no, it's a sad life I lead. And the first one is my own, so that was easy. And I'm 12 feet out and I don't, now I'm on a larger lot, but I, but I still don't think there's anything unattractive. I, I could envision my house shrunk down with the same extension, and I don't think it would be viewed as a, you know, one of those bullnose or unattractive. I, five feet seems extremely tight to put that kind of a limit on a house, to me personally, and especially if I think of the number of houses we have all over town that already, I know we are not writing code, you know, for existing things that would become non-conforming, but they're, they're in all parts of town and they're on all size lots, so it, it, to me, I guess I'd, I'd agree with the chair. I, I don't know why we really need to do that.
Any further discussion on that point?
Yeah, like I said, I disagree. Come, look around my neighborhood and see what's happening, and it's, it's a big issue. It's really making some not friendly areas, I mean, go back to the neighborhood character thing a little bit, it's really making suburban look on these really narrow lots, a very suburban look on these narrow lots, and that was, we did get a lot of feedback on this in our discussions with, with people, a lot of feedback. You know, it wasn't probably the top three, but it was up there.
Commissioner Potts?
Was this language meant to say a front-facing garage? May not extend?
It, it does if you, if you, this only deals with attached garages that face a public street.
Yeah, the previous page, okay. Commissioner Carr?
I would agree. I think that, I mean, you know, in any new development, the big thing is always with garages, they don't want garages facing the street because they're not attractive. So, you know, in new, if you were in an area where there were new developments, they'd ask that the garages face the side, et cetera. So I think it's, and I do think that garages overtaking the facades of the street are, this changes the streetscape, and I don't think it's as friendly, and I would recommend that we stick with the language as drafted. They should not extend beyond five feet.
The, the language as drafted in number two?
Yes, in number two, yes.
Okay. Commissioner Shear?
Does this language cover, I observed several recently, that the side of the garage is, it's a new, new home, replacing something that's been torn down, and as you drive in the driveway, you, you turn to go into the garage. Would this cover that? I mean, I don't find those any, if we talk about the friendly factor, I don't find those any friendlier than one with the garage door facing the street, personally. I mean, you're getting all garage in the front in comparison to, you know, a porch or doors and windows and everything else that show that people live there. I, it, it seems funny to distinguish one from the other, I guess is the point I'm making.
I think there's a distinction.
Commissioner Carr?
I think there's a distinction, too. Oftentimes, when the garage is not facing the street, there'll be windows on it. It looks like it's part of the house. Plus, the other thing is, people leave the garage doors open and, you know, there's, it gets closer and closer to the street.
Commissioner Forrest?
Couple of homes recently that the garage is like at a 45-degree angle. I'm anticipating the, the discussion that follows that. I don't feel super, I think it's a good, I think it's good, number two is okay to have it in there. I'm not, it's not one that I'm invested in personally, but I agree with Commissioner Platter that it was something that was mentioned a lot at the public meetings with some frequency, and actually, more than retaining walls, and also, it is something that has been addressed in numerous cities around the country as an issue that other communities are concerned about, too, so it's not something that, you know, we're pulling out of a hat either. So there's some merit to it. I think a lot of the homes that have the, you know, the front-facing garages, like you said, they're on larger lots, the ones that you were referring to, Commissioner Shear, but also, a number of them were, those homes were built in, you know, those years of Edina's history where we took pride in being a car community primarily, so.
This is also on lots under 75 feet, so...
Yeah, as, as a practical matter, you're not going to be able to build a side entrance garage under this, under this, because it only comes out five feet from the front, from the balance of the front out. It, it would preclude it, yeah.
All right, so the language, as I've been following it, provides in number one, the garage facade shall not exceed 60% of the width of the principal structure, and number two would read the garage facade may not extend beyond the front building line by more than five feet. Commissioner Carr?
And do, do we need to say facade, or does that change it anyway, or should, do we just say the garage, and the garage shall not exceed 60% of the width?
Remember, we were having concerns about whether it was the door or the, or the facade, and I also think having the word facade in Commissioner Forrest's scenario of a, of a not, of a garage facade that is not necessarily parallel to the front lot line, I assume you would just take a, a, an elevation, basically, of the front, and the 60%, if it's turned sideways, that's going to reduce the percentage. So I think it's important to have facade. Commissioner Grable?
Are we taking the, the height out?
That was what the discussion was, we can put it back in.
I have seen garages on houses with a 15-foot or more garage door, and I don't think that's what we intend. Yeah, for motorhome or whatever. Or a truck. I would not recommend taking the nine-foot height out.
I, I think that's a good, good comment, especially when you're talking 75 feet or less in width.
But it's the door height, right?
The door height, right.
It's the door height, okay.
So could we add on to the language with... So the garage facade shall not exceed 60% of the width of the principal structure and the garage door shall be no greater than nine feet in height? Well, it doesn't, I mean, if you say the garage facade shall be no more than nine, you, you got to split them up.
You got to separate them off, though.
I see.
All right, is that what people are looking for? Commissioner Shear?
And, and, and I just want to say this, then, because I hadn't thought about it until the last few minutes. If we stick with the garage not extending more than five feet, we have precluded the side entering garage, front-facing, or front-oriented.
If it faces the street, if the, I mean, however you want to say it, I'm assuming it says it maybe needs more explicit, but to me, this is where the, literally, the garage doors are facing the street, so if it's turned, it's not facing the street, right?
So...
Or does that need to...
So you're going to allow more than five feet extension from the house as long as the garage door doesn't face the street?
Correct, yes.
No.
That's not what this says, I don't think.
I, I was wrong.
Want to say that one more time? It's out of tape.
You could have a...
Would you like to correct my impression?
You could, you could still have, if, if, if the garage comes out and you've got porch here, if somehow you could put the entrance to the garage on the other side, you could still have a side entrance garage with a five-foot setback.
But, and a smaller, the smaller the lot, the tighter you're going to get because you got to have driveway and enough room to turn and then a deep enough garage.
I found them when I drove around, there are some.
Oh, there are some, but, but if you get down to a 50-foot width lot, it's going to be pretty tight. I mean, you could do it, I suppose, but there's...
This would not preclude that, is what I'm saying.
No, you could do that.
It's a, it's a practical matter.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Shear, I mean, Commissioner Forrest?
Sometimes we can pinch.
Hey, come on, I'm three and a half hours into this. I made my first mistake.
I'd like to move that the language that's, was recently provided by Carrie be moved forward to the city council, but I would also like to add a comment with that regarding this may not work well on houses, on some lots that are less than 50 feet in width, especially the 40-foot lots, but more as a, not as part of the language, just as a comment in the record that's tied to this segment.
It is in the record now.
Right, but I'd like it to be explicitly tied to, this is the language we moved forward.
Sounds like...
Put an asterisk on that. I just said I'd want to move it forward.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed the motion part, okay. Well, let me get a second and then we can come back to...
A second.
A second, all right. Discussion, Commissioner Carr?
I would just like to see those be three points, one, two, and three, the first item being the garage door shall be no more than nine feet. I mean, there's different issues. The second one, the garage facade shall not exceed 60%. Third, the garage facade may not extend beyond the front building. It just seems like there's three different points. Why are we merging two of them into one? I agree.
Does the mover accept that friendly amendment? Does the secondary accept that? Okay. Carrie, are you following that? All right. There's a lot of notes up here, but I'd hate to compile them for you.
I can go back to the tape, too.
There you go, there you go. All right, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. And my objection is just the second item, as I indicated earlier. Okay, item number seven, non-conforming front yard setbacks.
Staff did change up the language a little bit on this one to address the concern that was raised by some residents up in Interlochen in regard to if we had a, a little point intrusion or a small portion of the home that extended out, say it was a 60-foot setback, or the majority of the home was 80 feet back, which was a good point, and so we've amended the language here to include that same non-conforming language that exists for side yards, rear yards, for any non-conforming setback. So with this language, the concern of the residents in Interlochen, that property owner that obtained the variance would not be able to build the house that was approved up to that non-conforming setback.
So you, so the scenario is a, a front facade that only, you know, that is maybe, let's say it's 45 feet wide and you've got two feet that extend into somehow, from some architectural feature extending to the front yard, you shouldn't then be bootstrapped into being able to put the new house entirely at that, at that encroachment.
200 feet, right?
But you can get 200 feet of it, which is pretty small. Okay.
And that's what you, we kind of have for these other scenarios, too, right?
Right.
Okay.
On the same...
It's like the setback and, non-conforming setbacks and...
Right, if you had a rambler, you could add 200, additional square feet overlapping into that area, but you couldn't decide to then go have a two-story overlapping with an additional 200 square feet. You'd have to replicate what was there.
So it's a total of 200 square feet on however many floors you're going to do.
On each level.
On each level.
If, if it's a rambler now, you can't...
Oh, I see.
Rebuild a two-story house.
Okay. Okay, I think there was a concern expressed that, that the very minor kind of camel's nose under the tent was going to allow somebody to really bring the entire building forward, and this, I think, addresses that. Other discussion or comments on this item? Commissioner Shear?
I, I struggle with this one because I really don't know why, for tear downs, we want to encourage continuing non-conforming situations without a chance to review them or look at them or anything. I'm, I'm pleased to see that we've attempted to deal with the, you know, concern that a number of our citizens that came to testify had, but, but the overarching philosophy is hard for me. I, I view a teardown almost as, I do view it as a fresh start, you know, a time for us to look at a situation again and maybe apply code that hasn't been applied for a number of years or, you know, had unusual additions that weren't covered, and I, I, it, it just seems strange to me that we would codify a non-conforming situation in a teardown, where you're starting with a fresh slate.
Commissioner Platter?
Is the goal, though, to clean everything up, to make them, make all the non-conforming conforming at that point?
Well, that's not my goal. I mean, I, I think if, I like conforming.
Yeah, but, yeah.
But, but I, but I would like to have the opportunity... But I would like to have the opportunity to review it.
So you're not necessarily opposed, you would still want a review of it?
No, I'm not. I just struggle with why we want to take an currently non-conforming situation and say, "Guess what? You can have it in perpetuity when you've torn the house down."
Carrie, why don't you give us the rationale that...
Certainly, with the recent change that we made to the front yard setback, where you have to take the average of the homes on either side, we've rendered a lot of properties in town non-conforming if that house were torn down, especially in the large lot neighborhoods. And with that in mind, and then thinking back to some of our past practices for variances, for teardown rebuilds, we've essentially been approving variances to maintain the non-conforming setback. So in a way, we're taking the policy that's been established by the planning commission in approving variances to maintain that non-conforming setback, putting that into code, and then adding to it our non-conforming requirement that you can't expand beyond that non-conformity by over two hundred square feet.
And in a lot of those, well, in a lot of those average, a lot of the average setback provisions are on curved streets. They're cul-de-sacs, or they're curves, or they're not straight grids, and then we end up with this problem where it's really pretty silly to hold them to the average, because one house is set way further back than the other.
Or it's a situation where you have, all the houses on the street are close, and you're making the new one be pushed back behind all its neighbors without this.
Well, then if you, then you'd have an average on either side, and you'd come up to where the average on either side is.
If we keep that average part in there.
Right, so that's still, we're not changing that. Chris.
There's also been the continual problem where the original house was built at thirty feet, the neighbors come in and build their homes at forty and forty-five feet, and all of a sudden, the action of the neighbors on either side have caused...
Subsequent builders.
Right, have caused the original home, the first home, to be non-conforming. That's what we usually see.
Right. I do think, I think it is a function of the rule that we have that calls for average setback, you know, the average of the houses on either side. And there's some reasons to have that, but, you know, if we're not going to get rid of that, I think we're going to have these situations.
I think in many cases, that rule works. I think it's really meant for, let's say, the fifty-foot lots, right? Kind of the Minneapolis-type of...
The average is kind of for...
And where we run into it is all these variations through the years.
On the kind of straight grid, you want to have the houses roughly equal to each other.
Yeah, and that's what it's, works out pretty well.
Right.
So you would leave in the average as well as this language, Carrie?
Yeah, we haven't discussed changing the average.
I guess if, okay.
That's still there, and this would just be an exception to that.
Further discussion on this item? Commissioner Carr.
Have we gone to Roman at one here? The addition shall not exceed the existing square footage. When I was reading through A, it talks about a teardown and rebuild of a new home, and then all of a sudden, we go on, "And the addition shall not exceed." What do we mean by the addition? Is that the new construction or the new home? Is that what we mean by addition?
The new structure.
The addition sounds, it's not an addition we're talking about here.
Yeah, fair point.
It could be an addition.
Ah, okay.
The new structure.
We could add addition or...
New structure, a portion of the structure.
Or new structure, okay.
Or new construction, because then...
I was just thinking, new construction, because structure means, it implies it's a separate structure. And we cover both.
Any of those work for you, Carrie?
New construction would work.
Okay, let's do that. Any further discussion? All right, I'd take a motion on this one.
Move.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
For the reasons mentioned earlier. Commissioner Shearer?
I don't think we tend to review an inordinate number of these variances.
Okay, thank you. All right, next item is the garage stall requirements.
Can we put a time limit on this one?
Yeah, I don't want any filibuster, no eleven, no eleven-hour speeches here.
This is Ken's, and he's been quiet. He deserves to talk.
And Ken, yeah, well, we can have ten-hour speeches, but not eleven-hour speeches.
What Ken and Nancy were telling us.
All right, just for those who have stayed with us this long, I will remind folks that this issue is whether we should continue to require two-car garages or not, or whether we should permit people to have less than two-car garages if they would like to. And arguing for the one-car garage is Commissioner Potts, arguing for the two-car garage is Commissioner Shearer. It'll be nine rounds, three-knock-down rule. Commissioner Potts.
Well, I think this is allowing people lifestyle choice, particularly in the smaller lots that are close to commuting lines, to bus lines, allowing them to make the choice to have a single car and a single-car garage to house it. I think we, you know, we don't, as we discussed in the last meeting, we don't put a minimum size limit on the house. Why do we do that on the garage? And I had one more point to make. Oh, do we have a wording change? I think if, yeah, my last point is if there's an issue with the garage being used as a storage facility and a way to get people to keep their property clean, I don't think this is the right way to address that. I think there's a different way to address that than the size of the garage. That's it.
Commissioner Shearer.
Everybody's heard my concerns before. I, while I absolutely applaud the idea that it would be wonderful if we were a community that utilized the one-car option in great numbers, I don't think we are yet, and I'm concerned about the outflow of constructing a number of one-car garages. I really don't want to see a proliferation of storage structures, sheds, miscellaneous other buildings on a lot. And I don't want to see lots of equipment that needs storage surrounding a home. I know that we have many families who have three or four cars during the time when they have teenage children present in their homes, and those sit on driveways. It strikes me that if we go to the one-car solution, we're always going to see a lot of other cars on driveways, and I'd prefer not to see that for the entire life of a home. I just don't see us as a community that seems to exist with large numbers of exclusive commuters or one-car families. And I'm concerned about the, what happens as a result of that on a lot.
Commissioner.
Commissioner Grable.
Seems to me the market's going to take care of that, and somebody that's got three kids in high school with fourteen cars is not going to buy a house with a single-car garage. But to Commissioner Potts's point, there are people who would like to have and only need to have a single-car garage, and why not let the market allow that?
Commissioner Schroder.
I agree with Commissioner Potts, that some people may want to have that, but it may force us in the position in the future of having a granted variance to allow a two-car garage to be constructed for a future owner. Why don't we require for people who want to have a single-car garage that they demonstrate as part of their building permit how a second stall could be added in a conforming pattern? So that if it gets added in the future, they don't come back to us. There's a way they can add it without having to get a variance to do it.
Commissioner Carpenter.
It works for me. I mean, it solves, I think, the problems that we're talking about.
So my...
You're designing...
Commissioner Forrest.
You're designing the house, then. And, you know, if somebody wants to come back for variance and say, "We've got to have a two-car garage," if there's no other reasonable use for the property, that they got to have a two-car garage, I suppose we could grant the variance, but if not, we won't.
Commissioner Forrest, then Commissioner Platter.
Why would they need a variance at that point to build a two-car garage?
What he's saying is if you do a one-car garage, and you're all right at the setback, and then you decide, you're close to the setback, and then you decide, "Well, wait a minute, I actually need a second stall," and then you come in and you say, "I need to encroach on the sideyard setback in order to have a one-stall."
Oh, okay, that's not what I was...
Now, for me, the advantage of this is you, you're going to shrink the garage facade on the front on these houses, and so why take away their sideyard setback? Why do they have to increase their sideyard setback far enough to allow for two cars when, now that's going to undermine getting more facade that isn't garage?
My point was, it's not every owner who will want to have a single-car garage. Some will, some won't.
You're saying the new owner of the house will come in and say, "I want a second..."
And then the question is, how do they accomplish that?
Maybe they buy a different house.
Commissioner Grable would say they buy a different house.
Yeah, exactly. They buy a different house, because I mean, you could come in and say, "Well, now I need a one-story house, because I don't want to do stairs anymore." Well, you can tear the second story off. So I agree with Commissioner Potts as far as lifestyle choices, and also, I think it's a lot like the driveway's narrower than twelve feet. I don't think it's going to be a big issue, as, you know, Commissioner Grable said. There'd probably be a very minimal implementation of this section of the code, and it allows some, if it did go forward, it would provide some diversity in housing stock, say for retirees who only want to have one car, or people who are snowbirds, or young families who want to commute, or bike commuters, whatever. I think it provides some diversity in housing stock, especially for the smaller lots, which is where we need more of that diversity.
Commissioner Carpenter.
And it pretty much guarantees that for the property owner that now has that one-car garage, that the exterior grounds are going to become the storage area. I agree with Commissioner Shearer on that. We talked about this before. I think that you're just going to end up with a situation where there's going to be all kinds of stuff just sitting out there.
I think for what we perceive as common suburban lifestyle, that's true, or proliferation, as was mentioned, of yard sheds and things like that, which isn't appealing to me either. But I still think it's, I think it's an option that, I think it's an option that should be out there.
Commissioner Carr, did you...
I just wanted to state that I do think we should offer that option. That's a lifestyle choice. There may not, not everyone needs a two-car garage or wants one, so I think it's, and I, there, as far as people putting their toys outside or their equipment outside, I mean, that can happen if you have a two-car garage. And it's not so much what, whether it's a two-car or a one-car garage, it's the people that live in that home, and we can't change that.
Commissioner Platter.
I would say I agree with the language as it is. I mean, and all the points weighing towards that of potentially lifestyle changes, and that, that's, as people move back and infill, they're not necessarily always wanting it all, if you will. So it's an option, maybe it never gets used, I don't know, but it, these smaller lots, I'm not sure that requiring two stalls is the best use of our resources.
Why is the townhouse exception in there? What's the rationale for that? I don't, I just don't recall. Maybe you can help me out, Carrie.
Well, because when we're talking about, I mean, we've made the exception for lots less than seventy-five foot in width, but it's not, I don't think we were thinking about townhouses in that context. They're going to be less than seventy-five feet in width, but that wasn't what we were trying to...
The existing language requires two stalls for townhouses, so I was just...
I thought it was a leftover, and then I guess in my mind, I don't... I think it could be striking, yeah, I agree.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Carrie, what was the rationale for the requirement for two enclosed spaces for townhouses?
It was to bring Edina up to a more modern building standard, and that was the goal originally.
Bingo.
No, that would be for everything.
Do we require a washing machine in every house, too?
But I think the townhouse language was there before, right?
That's under another provision. We're not there yet. That's next chapter.
So it is just old language that's there, and...
It's the existing language. Is there an appetite for making any change consistent with what Commissioner Schroder had suggested about the... Whatever I remember of it. Sorry. Running out of steam.
I'm not sure I understand that.
Was that a motion?
Sure.
All right, is there a second? Motion is the existing language. The language in front of us with single spelled correctly, which it is in our document, even though it isn't on the screen. There you go. It lost a letter on the way.
Strike the last sentence.
Oh, your motion is to strike the last sentence.
Isn't that what we talked about, or did I miss something?
It's your motion, I'm fine with it.
It needs to be in there, because the whole section talks about single-dwelling units, double-dwelling units, and residential townhouses. So we're separating the two? So we're still saying that townhouses need to have two fully enclosed...
My motion is approve the language as written.
Is there a second? All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
So Commissioners Carpenter and Shearer, for the reasons stated previously, are opposed. All right, last item, miscellaneous code revision cleanup. Save the best for last.
This should be very controversial.
Yeah, no changes there. It's just not allowing a dwelling unit in an accessory, an accessory dwelling, and then cleaning up the floodplain language in regard to variances and conditional use permits.
All right, is there a motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sorry. Did you?
No.
Did you get the feeling you didn't want to hear it?
Sorry. I just had one, I just had one question. You've mentioned floodplain. What was the change regarding floodplain? The only reason I said that is because there was something in the newspaper recently about Edina residents and how they had changed the designation for floodplain, floodplains in Edina.
Yeah, there's no change proposed to the specific regulations in regard to floodplain.
Okay.
It's just within that section of the code, there are variance procedures outlined and conditional use permit procedures outlined. We have that covered in another section of our code.
Okay.
So we're just striking it here. So we're just covered in one spot.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Sorry about that. All right, so that will go forward with the commentary that we sent along with it to the city council. Carrie, do you know when they're going to take it up?
July 16th.
July 16th, very good. Thank you all for your hard work on this, and Commissioners Platter and Potts and Forrest for leading this thing over the last several months. I think this has been really good work. It's not easy, as we demonstrate, as anybody watching tonight now knows. It's not the easiest task in the world, but I think this is a, this is a very good product, and we should be pleased with the work we've done on it. So next is, next on the agenda is correspondence and petitions, council connection. Did we have a council connection this week? May not have. In the attendance sheet, and I'm, I have to comment that I'm astounded to find myself with Commissioner Potts and Commissioner Forrest as uniform attendance at our meetings, so the rest of you, you know, keep up. Well, Commissioner Carr is actually too. She just didn't get on board until February, so... Oh, no, last meeting, I guess she did miss. Never mind, never mind. Chair and Commission member comments. The only thing that I would note is if you are interested in serving on this, the, I can't even think, the Living Streets Advisory Committee, let me know, and we'll, I'll work with Carrie to formally appoint... with Carrie to formally appoint some, one or more persons to that next meeting. I also will want to have some discussion at one of the next couple of meetings about the Valley View-Wooddale kind of future plans, and then this whole notion of taking a mid-stream look at the comp plan. And I want to kind of work on, as we're approaching the middle of the year, how we can get to those two tasks in our work plan while we're fielding all the applications coming our way at the same time. So, that's all. I had any other comments from the commission? Okay. Commissioner Platter.
Just on this housing, it's been a long, long time. I appreciate everyone's openness and some great discussions here, I think, so, not I think, I mean, it's been, it's been a lot of stuff, and it's, it's, we'll see where it goes, but it's good discussions.
Very, very good work.
Thanks to the public, too, for their input on...
Yeah. Commissioner Shearer.
You know, one point I think we should make, particularly to the committee that did the work, I've been here eight years, as have you, and this is, this group operated with the greatest dispatch of any project that I have seen move through in eight years. So, I, I really think that's incredibly commendable, to have had all of the meetings, deliberations, et cetera, and have brought it, you know, to a recommendation to the council this quickly is amazing, and thanks to everybody who participated.
Very good. Staff comments? Nothing? No? Jordan? No? All right.
Yeah, we did, we did think of something. Since you're all here tonight, could we take a couple minutes and take a picture for the website?
It's picture time. Get us at 11 o'clock at night.
Or if you promise to all be here at the next meeting, we can try it then.
Next meeting is when?
The...
July.
All right, fine, we'll do it now. All right, let's hear the adjournment motion.
I move that we adjourn.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.